That's the agenda.
Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. We are on the record for the Regular Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, November 19th, 2015. We'll begin with roll call.
Chair Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chair Fryerman-Hunt.
Here.
Commissioners Buckles.
Here.
DeSai.
Here.
Hinton.
Here.
Hutt.
Here.
And Spears.
President.
A full company. Everybody present. What is the story with the minutes from the last meeting?
We were unable to complete the minutes. We had, you know, there was some short days due to the holidays and.
Okay, so we'll have minutes from this meeting and the last meeting at the next meeting?
Yes.
We will look forward to that. Would somebody like to approve the agenda this evening?
I will so move.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose that we reverse the order tonight because I believe that our discussions will, we have a rather unusual CUP request and I believe our discussions that we, you know, even though we're not setting policy with those discussions, I think they might inform our process with the, with the CUP.
You, I don't know. Comments? I don't know if one is relevant to the other. Anybody else weigh, like to weigh in? I would think that what's on the record is what's relevant for the discussion tonight, not what's to be on the record.
Um, okay. I'm still thinking that the, that the, having been on the subcommittee for the, to propose the CUP findings, um, I found that that discussion was very helpful in my understanding of the request.
I'm sure it is. I just don't believe that it's policy at the moment, so I don't know. My, my opinion is that we should go in the order, but I'll go with the majority of what people seated want to do.
An order doesn't make any difference to me, so.
Okay, and people are here for 156 Highland? I think I'd like to stay with the order unless somebody wants to side with Commissioner Spears. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, motion for the agenda as designed?
Second.
No, I didn't motion. Did somebody?
I'm the motion.
Okay, second, and in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, at this time, we would like to open the podium for audience comments to comment on anything that is not on the agenda as just was approved for this evening. If you have something to share, come on down, tell us who you are, and try to keep it to four minutes. Any takers? In seeing no takers, I will close, close audience comment and open the public hearing on CUP 1524, 156 West Highland, and I believe we have a staff report.
Yes, Letitia Cardosa will be giving the staff report.
I have a presentation. Good evening, Chair Goldstein and Commissioners. The case before you tonight is Conditional Use Permit 1524 at 156 West Highland Avenue.
I don't know if you're coming through loud and clear.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. As you can see, the project location here, it's across the street from Sierra Madre Elementary School on Highland Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a two-story, 1,322-square-foot recreation and exercise room that was recently built without permits on an R3-zone property that is being used as an R3-use, developed with three dwelling units. New development in the R3-zone requires approval of a conditional use permit, and the applicant is also requesting to encroach 9.8 percent into the required side yard setback along the east property line. That requires a minor conditional use permit, and it's a maximum of 10 percent encroachment. This is being folded into the conditional use permit, and therefore it's subject to the same findings. The building was originally constructed as a fourth dwelling unit by the applicant, again without prior building and zoning approvals from the city. Prior to constructing the building, the applicant demolished a 203-square-foot accessory building that was located in the same location at the rear of the property. The three dwelling units, as you can see, the, the largest one is 979 square feet, 520 square feet, and then 352 is the smaller one. There's also 100-square-foot laundry room and a 54-square-foot storage structure on the property. Upon reviewing the R3 zoning requirements to determine whether the additional multifamily unit could be permitted on the site, staff informed the applicant that the property does not meet the minimum lot size required per dwelling unit to allow the additional unit on the property. The, also, the existing parking is non-conforming. There are two spaces, one covered under a carport and one uncovered on the front yard, and the applicant would be required to bring it up to code, not just for what's there now, but also for what, for what is needed by the new building. Based on the layout of existing development on the site, it would be prohibitive to provide all of the parking that is required for four units on that property. So, given the zoning limitations, the applicant then decided he'd like to request approval of a CUP to maintain the building on the property and use it as a recreation exercise building for the use of the other units, the existing units on that same property. And then, in that case, the minimum lot size and parking requirements just are not, don't, don't need to be met. It's, it's an exercise room. It's not an additional unit. So, they're not applicable. According to the applicant, the recreation exercise building will provide adequate space for the activities and events of the three families that live in units A, B, and C on the site. Pursuant to the R3 zoning ordinance, common usable recreational areas are required at a minimum of 400 square feet for each dwelling, and recreational buildings can be used toward meeting this requirement. And here you see the site plan, Highland Avenue here, and as you enter the site, you go under the carport, and here is the first unit, second and third units, laundry room, and then the new structure here. The former accessory building that was here, 200-square-foot, I believe it was an office, small building, was demoed, and this is where it was located previously. This is the floor plan for the first floor. At staff's request, the applicant removed the kitchen that was originally located on the first floor of the building, since the structure cannot be used as a dwelling unit. And as I recall, I believe the kitchen, oops, sorry, I believe the kitchen was located in this area here, if I'm correct, and the applicant can correct me, but I believe it was here. The original plans that were submitted to the city by the applicant showed a shower in the first-floor bathroom and a bathtub in the second. This is the second floor. So, the first-floor bathroom, this is where the, the shower was located here, where this linen closet now is located. And then, on the second story, this is where, this area here is where the bathtub was. They're showing a wall here. Staff asked the applicant to remove those elements so that only a sink and toilet would be allowed in those bathrooms, given that the units are on the site in proximity to this building, so that there will be no need to have four or three-quarter bathrooms in, in this particular structure. The applicant, again, replaced it with closets. In this one, the closet has been removed, but originally there was a closet here. However, the applicant is requesting approval of the bathrooms that are, as originally designed, to serve the needs of the families living in the existing units. As he stated, that the units do not have adequate restroom facilities to serve their needs, and in your packet included that information that was provided by the applicant. Staff, however, is concerned that the structure could be converted in the future without approval by the city, so consequently, the commission wishes to approve this request. Staff recommends that the resolution includes a condition of approval that prohibits these bathrooms from being full or three-quarter bathrooms, and also, staff recommends that recreadation of a covenant is required as well as a condition of approval, restricting the use of this structure to a recreation and exercise building and prohibiting its conversion to a dwelling unit and use of that building as permanent or temporary sleeping or living quarters. Here you see the elevations. This is the south elevation with French doors, and it's a half, it's a half-second story, as you can see here, on the east elevation, and then, again, north elevation with, with the entrance in the back there, and also the west elevation with an entrance along that side. Here are some photographs of the building. Again, this is the south elevation, and the applicant is also building a patio here. And then, this is view from the northwest, southwest, and northeast of the building. The property frontage, and here you see a little bit of the carport. That's where it's located, and this is the flat area where there's another parking space, as you can see, is being used by that vehicle, and then this is the west side of that frontage. Regarding environmental determination, the project is categorically exempt from CEQA as it involves construction, construction of an accessory structure on a multifamily residential property developed with three units. Tonight, the commission has the following alternatives: approve the application for Conditional Use Permit pursuant to Planning Commission Resolution 1516 that was included in your packet. The commission can deny the application for the CUP, identifying the findings that cannot be made and the basis for rejecting those findings, and the third option is to continue the meeting and provide the applicant with direction on the project. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP to the Planning Commission pursuant to the findings included in your resolution, and these are the findings that must be made in order to approve the Conditional Use Permit. And approval would be, the recommendation is that it is subject to conditions of approval that were also included in the resolution. This concludes my presentation. The property owner is here, if you'd like to ask him questions, and also, I'm available, obviously, to answer questions you might have.
Thanks, Letitia. Just for clarification for the home viewing audience and such, the request to build is largely moot because the structure is built and completed, correct?
That is correct, and that is why it's explained as a request to allow it, allow the use, and not to construct. The building has been constructed.
And in terms of the conditions of approval to not allow the bathrooms, that would require removal of bathrooms because the bathrooms and the showers and the tubs are in.
It would require removals of those areas of the bathrooms. The bathroom would have to be reduced in size.
Right.
To just accommodate the toilet and the sink.
So, whatever we do or don't approve here tonight, we will back into. It will not be an approval to move forward. It'll be a retrofit to whatever is or isn't approved.
That is correct, and you do have the discretion to require any changes that, you know, you feel are necessary to ensure that this is, for the use that it is being requested.
And can you give us a little history on how we found out about this project and what, it was obviously built without approvals. How did it come to our attention and such?
The city received a complaint, so it was started as a code enforcement complaint, and we went to the site to investigate what was being constructed.
So, you found it in the midst of construction?
That is correct. In fact, I believe it was well into construction. I mean, I think there may be some things that need, still need to be done, but it was, it was pretty much.
And when you did that, did you instruct the applicant to stop construction until we had this public hearing, or did they just continue on building?
We asked him to come in. The, the, basically was a, a notice, basically a notice to come to the city, asking the applicant to come to the city, stop work, come to the city, and to discuss whether they could continue. It needed to be legalized, what he needed to do to legalize, and the Conditional Use Permit is part of that code enforcement process.
So, did they stop building when you went out there and asked them to come do the Conditional Use Permit hearing, or did they finish the project?
To my understanding, they stopped building.
They stopped building. Okay.
I wanted to tag on to that. Did, was there a reason given why this was even undertaken without permits? Was it no knowledge that permits were required, or?
That would be a question for the applicant.
A question I have. I was looking at the laundry room, and it looks really new. Is it built with permits?
I believe there, there, there are permits on file for that room. It may have been something else before. I'm not 100% sure. I know that the applicant installed an electric meter in that building, and an, an address was issued for that small building.
That's a freestanding structure, four of five, right? The laundry room that we're talking about? There's four freestanding structures.
It's the one with the two-story tower.
It's right.
I'm just clarifying for everybody.
Immediately north of the.
Right, so there's four structures on the property, and following up on Commissioner Hinton's question, are the other buildings all permitted and copacetic and all that?
They are older buildings.
Mm-hmm.
I am not sure whether we have permits on file for those. It doesn't mean that they were not permitted. If they're old enough structures, sometimes we don't have permits on file, depending on the age of the building.
Letitia, when, when I went to the site, I saw four electrical meters. So, are those four for the three units and the laundry room, then?
That is correct.
And so, there's no electrical service currently for the new building?
Separate.
So, it's, it's pony, piggybacked off on one of the others or something like that?
To my understanding, there's nothing there, there are four, and that's all I know that, that's all I am aware of.
Okay.
You were not able to get a new electrical service at this point, right?
Well, apparently, they got that electrical service for the laundry room.
Ah, I see.
So, we're reviewing the zoning part of this, not building code compliance. Has there been building code review to make sure that the, the building as built meets building code?
If the building is allowed to remain under the zoning, if this Conditional Use Permit is approved, the applicant will be required to submit as-built plans for plan check, and at that time, building and safety and, and structural and all that will have to be reviewed, and any modifications that need to be made to bring it into compliance with building code, fire code, et cetera, will have to occur before and after the fact building permit is issued.
Okay.
So, at this point, there are conceptual, conceptual plans that were submitted. There, it's very limited in terms of building and safety review at this point.
So, that would be the next step?
That would be the next step.
If this were approved.
But the fire, but the fire marshal has reviewed the locations of the buildings for access purposes and fire safety?
They have looked at the conceptual plans, yes.
Okay.
Or that, he said, he asked something else. He asked if they reviewed it for, for access.
That was my question, too.
And, and separation between the, the buildings, because has building reviewed the location of the new building in relation to the other buildings for separation?
Yes, yes.
Do they have?
Yes. We, we did not get any comments saying that, stating that where the building is cannot, cannot remain.
Okay.
So, I noticed that the building wasn't sprinkled. If this, if we, if this project moves ahead, and, and the, aren't we liable for the safety of the people who use that building?
That will be done through the plan check process.
But without a, but without the inspection, how will we know? I mean, the, the foundation could be substandard. I mean, we're, we don't know what, I mean, we're, aren't we presenting the city with a great deal of liability by accepting a building that, for which we have no inspections?
The, what will happen is, it'll go, they'll submit as-built plans. It'll go through plan check, and if it, everything, everything is shown to comply, including structural, they have to submit structural calculations as part of the plan check, and any, and then we'll have to inspect the building to make sure that what is being provided to us matches what's out there. And the inspection may include some intrusive components to the inspection to make sure that structural everything meets standards.
But when.
It's not until then that we can issue a final and close that building permit as final by the city, meaning complies with, with all of the requirements.
But when I have to do construction at home, I cannot proceed with certain things until previous things have been inspected, like the foundation. You know, you can't put, you can't put wood on top of the foundation unless it's been approved and measured, and then you can't do wiring until, or you can't enclose the wiring, and, and so, how can the city go back and somehow decide that it's okay without that kind of inspection?
It can happen. The, the building official, we, you know, we can legalize buildings that have not been built per permit. That's not unheard of. The building official will have to talk to the applicant and let him know what needs to be done in order for him to have access, to see things that need to be verified. So, if the applicant has to remove something in order for the building official to verify, he will need to do that. So, it is part of that process.
Potentially, they may have to open up the structure.
They might have to, yes.
And if, and if, for fire code, they would have to put in sprinklers? They would have to retrofit sprinklers in?
Yes, they would.
Okay. And then, I, I asked you this earlier, but I want to make sure we get this on the record. The R3 code allows a density bonus for good design that, on this site, could allow up to four units, but it was staff's opinion that the project would not qualify for that density bonus. Is that right?
In the past, the commission has been very strict with reviewing the projects against that criteria. In fact, I, I even remember one project where the commission voted to deny that request, and being that this is a previously built property, in my estimate, I thought it was very difficult that the applicant could meet that standard.
Right.
So, yes.
And also.
Plus you have the parking issue.
And then, there's the parking issue.
And then, there's the parking, exactly. The parking issue was a more insurmountable issue in that it, they basically could not provide the parking because there's just no room to provide the required parking.
Do we know if there's any permits that the police department has issued for parking overnight on the city streets for the occupants of this?
I am not, not aware of that, but I can certainly look into it.
Okay, and then, finally, we review this, notwithstanding the fact that it's already built, the way we review it is we sort of pretend that the building doesn't exist, and we look at it, plans as if this is what we're gonna build, and so, we can't penalize the applicant because they didn't get any permits. Is that right?
That is correct. You're reviewing it against the R3 zoning requirements, and also, you are considering whether you can make the findings for approval. That is, is really the scope of your review, and the seat attorney can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong.
What are the findings for the encroachment?
It's, they're the same findings as for the Conditional Use Permit. When they are combined, the findings are basically the, the stricter finding, which is the Conditional Use Permit.
And what was the nature of the complaint that referred it to you? Was the nature of the complaint the construction, or was the nature of the complaint the encroachment?
The complaint, the nature was that they looked like they were transforming an office building into a unit.
So, there was no complaint about how close it is to the property line?
No. Not to my knowledge.
Kind of funny, because in fact, it's closer than what's stated on the plan.
Yeah.
It's much closer.
It's five feet away.
Yeah.
Is there?
It's kind of funny.
Oh, is, so, the only penalty, then, for building a building without permits is you pay double building permit fees. Is that right?
That is correct. In terms of fees, the city's building code allows doubling of the building permit fees only.
It allows, but it doesn't require?
It requires it to, you know, and I believe it's to the discretion of the building official.
Okay, but the, the zoning entitlement, like the CUP fee, is not doubled?
That is correct.
No, I think we need something.
So, getting, getting back, getting back to the issue of the encroachment, if we were not able to make the findings that allowed that, would we instruct the applicant to shave the building back to the code setback?
Yes.
And if we suggested that they do that in order to receive the Conditional Use Permit, and they didn't do it, then what happens?
Well, that is a condition of approval, and if a condition of approval is not met, then there is grounds for revocation of the, of the Conditional Use Permit, and then, following that, it would be demolition of the building.
So, we would issue the Conditional Use Permit on that condition, but then it would have to be actioned by the applicant?
That is correct.
And then, who would be in charge of making sure that happened?
When the applicant submits as-built plans or construction plans to go through plan check, he has to be shown as meeting the setback requirement.
So, we never see it again? It doesn't come to us?
The commission does not see it again, no. The commission does not see conditions of approval.
Okay.
Conditions of approval are.
Got it. We just set the policy.
Correct.
There's no enforcement here. Okay. Any other questions for Letitia?
Yes, I have one.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I do need to correct that. It, it, if it is determined that it is not followed, and, and there is a revocation, then I, it does come to you for, for approval of the revocation of the Conditional Use Permit. I just want to make that clear.
Say that one more time?
If the, if the Conditional Use Permit is revoked, it does come to you as a revocation.
So, you would bring it to us, saying after a certain amount of time, they hadn't met the conditions, and as such, you're proposing that we revoke the CUP, at which point, then whatever happens, happens?
Right.
Got it. Okay.
Can I figure, ask how we got here? You, you discovered that there was a residence built that, that was not permitted. The applicant said, well, it's gonna be a, a residence. You said, well, you can't build a residence. Who came up with the concept that it's some kind of recreational facility?
The applicant asked whether that could be used as a recreation building.
So, the applicant was, was able to, said, oh, it's a recreational facility, and you said, well, that does fall inside the code.
Correct.
And then, you looked at and said, well, a recreational facility can't have bathrooms because it can be converted at a later point, and so, your position was, well, it, if it's a recreational facility, it should not have showers.
That is not in the code. I want to make that clear. That is a recommendation from staff in order to help the.
Ensure, ensure, ensure that it is not converted at a later date.
Correct, correct. So, that is why that's a condition of approval and not.
But there, but there is no, there is nothing in the.
No code.
There is nothing in the code that says a recreational facility has to have any bathrooms.
Correct.
Or can't have any bathrooms.
Correct. It's not specified either way.
So, how, are any other questions?
I had a question about the 9.8 percent.
Can you?
Yeah, the question about the 9.8 percent required side yard setback that they're requesting that we approve. Is that based on the seven-foot dimension or the actual five-foot dimension that was?
It's based on the seven.
What does it mean? Is it a percentage of how big the setback is, or?
Length, right.
How long it is? What does the 10 percent mean exactly?
Right, the way it works is that you come up with this total square footage of the actual setback, the side yard setback. You first establish what that square footage is, and out of that square footage, then you measure the square footage that is encroaching into that as a percentage of that total.
It's an area. It's an area measurement.
That is correct.
But the code setback there would be what? 10 feet? The side yard?
Uh, it's 10 feet for a one-story building and 15 for a two-story building.
So, it's, so just to be clear, at pure code, it's a 15-foot side yard setback, and we're.
For the second floor. The first floor.
I understand, and for the first floor, it's 10, and we're asking for a percent of what? A percent of the 10?
No, no.
What? What are you asking for a percentage of?
The applicant is asking to encroach no more than 10 percent of the total side yard square footage.
The area.
That is required.
Area. It's a plan thing, so.
So, say.
Across the board.
So, say the side yard square footage, side yard setback adds up to 200 square feet, let's say.
Yeah.
The applicant is asking not to encroach any more than 10 percent of that 200.
And so, what would, that would be 20 feet?
In that example.
Okay.
In that example.
And what's there? What is, what, have we measured what it should be and what the encroachment as built actually? What is it?
On the plan, in fact, it is on the plan.
No, on the actual, not on the plan, on what's built, on what's set to.
Well, if it's, if it's not what's shown on the plan, I can't tell you because I don't know exactly. I mean, I would have to make that.
We're, it doesn't look like this, but, I mean, it looks like.
It could possibly be more than 10 percent.
Okay, so, I don't know how we.
They're almost at 10 percent.
It was 9.8? Is that what it?
It was nine, it's 9.8, as measured from what they provided. So, if it's more than that, if the encroachment is more than that, it possibly could have gone over.
I'm not an architect, but I was over there. It looked.
It's closer. I measured.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, any?
How are deed restrictions enforced?
How, are they conditions of approval?
No, the, if it, something is a covenant on there.
Closer to the mic, please.
On the deed. How, and says they can't use, have the bathrooms, and they can't sleep in it and all that. How is that enforced?
It's not. It is a covenant that runs with the title of the property.
Right.
The city can and the commission can very well, in fact, we were discussing this. It is, if the commission wishes to provide an extra layer of insurance in terms of it not becoming a unit, you could add to the covenant that the city has the ability to inspect at, say, 24-hour notice yearly to make sure that it's not, you know, that a kitchen is not being added, the bathrooms are still the bathrooms that were approved or no bathrooms if they're not approved. It really is, it's through a covenant and perhaps the ability of the city to inspect.
Does the city have the manpower and the wherewithal to do that? I mean, that seems to be an owner's task to be put back onto the city for nothing that the city did, just to, you know. So, you know, is that, is that something, are there other properties that you have to do that with?
For properties that have covenants, it does come with language that the city has the right to inspect if it's determined that there's reason to believe that it's being violated. In this case, you could not have that language and just say that once a year, the city will inspect so that-
I'm not interested in putting more work on the city to compensate for the applicant's, you know, decisions, you know.
Yeah, I, you know, just some background on how this plays out a lot in the real estate industry is if it's a deed restriction that's, that's on title, that can be pulled up, then it becomes an issue when you want to refinance or sell the property. That's really when it becomes an issue. A lender might look at this and say, oh, it says you can't do this and you're violating it, so I'm not gonna lend on it. Or a buyer might have some issues, but code enforcement is tough. I mean, it's really somebody noticing something.
Yes, you're correct. It would require manpower from the city to go out there and you could-
Microphone, please.
It would require manpower from the city, on the part of the city, to actually do this.
And given the fact that the applicant was able to demolish a building, build a new one and that involved multiple crafts and whatever, coming in without the city being aware of it, you know, it, it looks like the-
Six blocks from here.
Six blocks from here. It doesn't look like that, you know, you guys are busy at the counter and don't have time to, you know, drive up and down the city streets wondering, you know, what's going on. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not inclined to put one more task on, on your, on your shop because of someone else's poor behavior.
I think my last question before we hear from the applicant, so, and again, just mostly for public disclosure, we have a letter from the applicant asking us to be sensitive to their needs because their current bathrooms on the existing four structures are not enough for their needs and that's why they want to leave the bathrooms there. How does that play into our decision tonight? Are we supposed to incorporate that letter into our thinking or is that letter not reasonable to our thinking in this decision?
You can take that into consideration. My understanding is you can consider a request by the applicant. It's part of the request.
So we would have a recreational facility on a property occupied by multiple families that was being used for their basic bath needs? Okay. Any other questions for staff? We'll hear from the applicant, please. Hi. Come on down to the podium, please. Introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Steve Solician. I grew up here and went to Arcadia High School and my brothers and I, we bought this property and our family's growing. We have children and we're expanding faster than our property can hold us. We don't have any guest bathrooms. We don't have a place where we can sit together as a family. We have grandparents, both sides, three sides, and, you know, growing kids and they want to play and run and we don't have any space to do it as a family. And that's why I set out to basically convert my old office into a place that the family can get together. And, you know, to be honest, it's a miracle it's even there. I mean, I can't believe I was able to put that together. It's really a, you know, I hope you can understand that it's something that we really want. We, and we're, we wanna, I want to explain to you that I'm not in this business. I don't know about the process. Letitia was very friendly and kind and Monica and they shared with me the information about how to go about doing this, which I had no idea. I had no plans. I just had these hands. I tore down the building with a sledgehammer so we could have a place to be a family and I just hope you guys can understand that. I mean, that the property, I love that place. When I, when I drove by, you know, convinced my brothers, this is the place for us. It's a beautiful place. Look at it. It's just, the construction is just amazing. And it was, I really took, took it to heart and I wanted to, to improve the property for our use.
So I just, you had no idea that there were processes, procedures, laws, building codes, zoning ordinances that never crossed your mind? You just think you could take a sledgehammer, knock down an existing structure, draw a picture of a house, pour concrete, put up walls, bring in electric, put in plumbing and that's the way construction happens in a municipality in the 21st century?
Well, um-
Seriously, just, I mean, you had no idea that any, any, there was a building department here? There's a city council? There's a planning commission?
I didn't know it was something I could do with my pay grade.
Explain that's a different-
You know, I'm not, you know, I'm just doing the best I can do with my resources.
But that's not the question I asked you. The question I asked you was, did you have no idea that there were laws and conditions and permits that needed to be done to put up a structure in a neighborhood?
I just really had no experience and I didn't have somebody to guide me. I didn't have somebody to explain to me that what an architect can do to help me or to, you know, even get started. I just knew I needed a place to-
So if your neighbor were putting up a structure with no supervision, no guidance, no fire inspection, that'd be okay with you? That wouldn't bother you? They did the same thing?
Well, I mean, I would, I would assume that they had professionals working with them.
And you didn't? You had no professionals working for you? That was all, you did all that work?
Well, I mean, I, you know, hired some guys from home people.
And the guys that you hired, they didn't ask about, so, so what you're saying is that there were no professional, there was no professional electrician doing the work?
Plumbers.
Plumbers? You did that?
A lot of it, yeah.
So we can't, so, so we have no idea that this building has any, is anything up to code, correct? Is that what you're saying? Because you did it and you, and you have no experience in this?
Well, I mean, I, I had, you know, guys that were, you know, said they knew what they were doing, you know.
But you don't, but you didn't know that? They didn't have a license? No one had a license when they did it? There was no licensing?
I wasn't, I wasn't checking.
You, you didn't check licenses? So you have no idea that anybody, any licensed electrician or plumber or anybody had any, or carpenter did anything on this structure? How do you, how do you, if, how are you going to ensure the safety of your family in such a thing?
Well, I'm, I'm under the impression, and I was there, you know, through the process. I mean, it's, it's, the construction is, is, I mean, fairly, you know, we've oversized everything. It's very-
How do you know?
How do you know if it's oversized if you don't know anything about, if you don't have a license and you don't have any plans?
Who designed the building?
Well, we didn't really have a design. We just-
Well, you don't just start putting sticks together. I mean, you, I guess you could, but that building was not built just by putting sticks in the ground and seeing what organically comes forth. It was designed by somebody. And if it were you, you had to search the internet. And you don't search the internet and figure out how to design a building without understanding, oh, they're building codes and there's code requirements and I have to apply for permits and such. I mean, it's unfathomable that you build it yourself and you got enough knowledge to build that building because it looks pretty well-built. And, and not know that-
Let's stay with questions until we get to discussion?
I, I just, okay.
So the application now is to make this a recreation building. This was not built as a building for recreation. This was built as another housing unit, correct?
Initially, yes.
It was built as a housing unit, which is not permitted because of, starting with parking.
Because of the parking.
Because of the parking?
Yes.
Right. So that's not allowed. So now you're trying to rescue this and turn it into something else. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, we can still-
You're trying to find a use for this building that would not be legal for the reason it was built.
Well, we don't, we don't have enough space right now for our family. So this would provide a place that, you know, we could sit down.
Yeah, but you didn't set out to build something like that. You wouldn't have just built a recreation building back there.
With a kitchen.
With a kitchen and two bathrooms.
And a, and two bathrooms.
Let's call it a wet bar. I mean, it was, you know-
Careful, careful about let's call it. Let's be accurate.
Well, I'm, like I said, we're just trying to use our property, you know, as a family and this, this building provides the space that we need.
Why would, why, given the fact that this was built without any permitting that is required in the city?
Or zoning conformity?
Or zoning conformity. Why would we think that you wouldn't go back in and rebuild it back to the way it was before into a, into an apartment again?
For rent.
To rent it out?
Well, I'm, well, I'm gonna-
I mean, you built the whole building without anyone knowing.
It's not gonna be used for that purpose.
So you don't rent out any of those apartments? Any of those units?
Well, my brother and his wife and two kids live in the front. And then the two smaller units, I'm planning to move in there.
So, but I asked you, you don't rent them or do you rent them right now? Right now?
I just, currently, the two smallest houses, they're currently rented, yes.
They're rented. You know that in the city, can I, can I ask staff to, is there a, is there a business license on file for rental for this property?
No.
So you don't have a business license to rent either?
I didn't know that that was. Can I ask, when you bought this property, how many houses were on it?
Uh, three.
Oh, you bought it with all three already there? How long ago was that?
2012.
Okay.
And how many other buildings were on there besides the two, the three houses?
Well, there was the, the three houses and then the existing laundry room and the, and there was an office, the small office.
So there were five buildings?
The laundry room, did it have that two-story part when you bought it?
Yes, yes. That was existing. It did have the meters also. The meters were for the laundry room, so it already had an electric meter.
And how many cars, well, I guess you don't live there, right? There's, how many cars does your brother's family and the two renters have?
How many cars?
Yes.
My brother, they have two cars. They park in the front.
And the renters don't have any cars?
I'm not sure what their parking situation is.
So you don't know if they have a permit with the police to park overnight on the street?
I'd have to ask them. I'd assume, I mean-
When you go to sleep at night, there's a dirt road that goes down the middle of the property. Are there cars parked on that dirt road?
Where's the dirt road? On my property?
Yes, when you go through it, I guess it's a driveway. It looks to me like a little-
No, we don't park back there.
You don't, there's no cars parked there overnight?
There normally.
So that's just a thorough, like a walking thoroughfare?
Walking, yes.
And there's like a parking space in the front, right?
There's two, two spots in the-
On the property. Okay. But you don't know if the renters have cars or don't have cars?
I never checked with them.
You don't know?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
So you know of two cars that belong to your brother, but you don't know of any cars that belong to the renters?
I just, actually, I just rented the, the unit that I was gonna live in to pay for my, my-
So when the renter filled out, did the renter fill out a rental application?
Yes, I have one.
And did they ask you if it came with a parking space?
She did and she said she was gonna come and get a parking permit from the city, but I didn't, I didn't follow through on it.
So you would assume if she asked you that question, she probably has a car? So that's one more car. And then what about the other, the other renter?
I think, I'm not sure. I know she has a car, but I haven't, I've never seen it.
She does have a car.
I don't know where she parks it.
Okay.
Regardless who lives in it right now, there's the potential of eight cars.
Well, we're four right now in actuality, so. Six.
Well, if a couple lives in each one of the three houses that are there right now.
No, we have identified four.
Oh.
Yeah. Did you give any thought, if you're gonna have three units, of converting one of the smaller units to a recreation room and then using the bigger one as a unit?
No, I mean, that wasn't, I didn't consider that, no.
Okay.
Did you hire a structural engineer to design the second story?
I worked with some guys at the desk at Ginnall.
Pardon me?
I talked to some people in the, at the contracting area.
At the lumber department?
At the lumberyard.
Because you do require, you need a structural engineer for the second story to get a permit.
Yeah, I had, I had it done.
Did they have a license?
Is your architect or contractor here tonight?
One question at a time, please.
I'm sorry. Do you have an architect or engineer or contractor here tonight? A professional that can-
I have an architect, yes. Yes.
Okay, so we can ask him questions?
And also, there was an issue about the side yard. We actually own part of the neighbor's driveway, four feet of it. That's why the, the plans are, that's why the calculation is-
So the wall that's built on the side yard is entirely on your property?
Yeah.
And you own a portion of what appears to be their yard?
Right.
Do you have any proof of that?
How would we be able to tell without a survey?
You can ask my-
No, you would get a survey. That's how you would tell.
This isn't a survey.
So, so when I Googled, you know, your address and a few things, I did come up with the, you know, your request to rent your property.
Yeah.
But also, who's Harold?
That's my father.
Is he a contractor?
Yeah, retired.
He, he is a retired contractor. So he, he's aware of the, of the rules and laws governing the construction of buildings?
Probably, I mean, I haven't-
And he never came around to offer you advice?
Not too, not too much, no.
Not too much? But he never, it never came up like, do you have a permit?
Well, I bought it with my brother Bob, so we didn't involve him.
And he never, but he's part of the family that you want to have inside this building when you do your family get-togethers for like Thanksgiving and stuff, right? Yeah?
Yeah, he's part of the family.
Yeah? And he's come to the property? And did he help you construct the building?
Not, not actually construct it, no, but he was-
But he provided you advice?
Not construction advice, but I, I, but yeah, he, I mean, he's, you know, I mean, he said he's my dad, so he's aware, I'm sure what we're doing.
Is his license still active in the state of California?
I believe so, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Love to hear from the architect.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the architect about the structural rigidity and safety of the building.
Great.
We'll hear from the architect, please.
That's a familiar face.
My name is Samir.
Have we met before?
Have we seen you before?
Yeah.
When? The last one, yes?
Yeah.
Small world.
When did you become the architect on this project?
Just after he finished, he asked me to draw the existing building.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I just drew the existing building.
You just did the as-built?
The existing, after he built.
As-built.
So when, when did you become employed by the applicant? Two months ago, after the construction was complete?
Just after the city gave him notice. He called me to come on the building.
So you weren't involved in any of the construction that was done there? You can't speak to the-
But he has some picture he showed to me when he constructed, but I'm not involved for the construction.
So you have an opinion of the work that's been done there? You have no opinion?
No, the, the building, the building is a good condition, but I don't know.
That's what I meant by an opinion. Could you tell us what your opinion of the building is? Yeah. A little more detail. Safe, sound, structural?
I think so. It's safe because he showed me a picture for the foundation, which is, it's, it's not bad. And he showed me some picture for the insulation and the drywall and the roof.
So did they just get lucky or were there professionals involved?
I don't know.
What would be your opinion?
I think if we're gonna do the building drawing, I think we have to get an engineer to calculate everything.
Yeah, I, I-
Yeah, I question the integrity of the second floor structure. If it wasn't designed by a structural engineer-
Into the mic.
I don't know. I just-
And then structural components installed for the second floor structure. You know, that's, I question anybody walking underneath the second story structure.
I don't know anything about that inside. I just saw the building after the drywall. I don't know anything.
And you said he showed you quite a few- And, and you said he, he showed you quite a few pictures?
Yeah, the picture, he has it.
Why was there the need to take so many, so many pictures?
Yeah, he has it. He can submit it to the city.
If he didn't know that, didn't need to get a building permit, why would-
Yeah, I don't-
Taken so many pictures?
Yeah, I don't know.
No, I don't know.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, we may wanna chat with you some more if that's okay, if you can stay. Be nice. Can you stay this evening?
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Can have a seat for right now. Before I open the public hearing, Laticee, can I ask you a que, one more question?
Of course.
Staff has recommended approval of the CUP with the condition of pulling out the shower and the bathtub. Why?
Because staff is concerned that this unit, that just lends itself having full bathrooms or three-quarter bathrooms.
Not the question of why do the bathrooms go? Why are you recommending approval?
Oh, because, uh, staff, uh, has made the findings that are in your packet. If the commission feels that, um, it disagrees with any of the findings, um, then you can, um, deny the project.
So in your opinion, it makes the findings subsequent to the removal of those structures?
As stated in your resolution.
Okay.
With the condition that, that, that the bathrooms be only allowed to be-
And none of this other stuff that we just talked about matters in terms of that approval?
It, not, not of a, a CUP approval, which is a conceptual approval.
Uh-huh.
He has to go through plan check and he has to, um, show that he complies with building code, fire code, all of the codes that are applicable. In fact, one of the conditions of approval is that all of those apply. So whatever modifications they need to make as part of that plan check process, show on the plans modifications they're making in order to get those plans approved would have to be done. If they're enabled to make those modifications, then they cannot obtain a building permit, in which case the, the, the CUP would then be null and void because you can't exercise.
Right, we got that.
Yeah.
How do you make the finding on the encroachment?
Well, let me take a look.
Well, I, I think one, one big issue on the encroachment, though, is where the property line is.
If I may-
I mean, that's a fundamental issue.
This issue of, uh, their ownership of property on the other side of the wall.
Um, that would, I would suggest that another condition of approval be included, uh, requi, requiring us, that a survey be done to verify that.
I don't even know how we could vote on it without that in front of us. I mean, it seems so, it seems so vague. I mean, and I haven't know if the neighbor's here tonight or not. Is there a neighbor here tonight? No?
We haven't seen a survey of the property lines of this plot of land.
I think we've seen the documents that were presented.
No, we haven't seen a survey.
I mean, something like that, if it was a four or five foot, I mean, even on the assessors, there'd be a hook on that. I mean, is it a separate piece that's hooked onto this parcel or is it?
I believe there is. The question is where that is on the actual-
Or if you have to knock down the wall. I don't know what the clearance there needs to be. I mean, it's pretty tight.
It's five, less than, just around five feet.
All right, yeah. Okay. That's all my questions. I'm gonna open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the house who'd like to comment on this project, the mic is now open. Come on down.
I, I'm sorry, I, did you, um, I wanted to address your, your question-
Oh, yeah, how did you make, yeah, how did you make it?
Um, finding number three, um, at the end of that finding, you will see that I included with respect to the side yard encroachment, the second story wall along the east elevation does not have any windows, is avoiding privacy impacts of adjacent property. That's the finding that, um, says the proposed use would not unreasonably interfere with the use possession and enjoyment. That's, okay.
And we've heard nothing from the neighbor to the contrary?
I have not heard anything from the neighbor.
So the only complaint, was the nature of the complaint was the noise of the construction or what was the nature of the complaint again?
The, the initial complaint that caused us to open the case, uh, the code enforcement action was that, uh, it appeared that they, they were converting an office building to a, to a, and that's why we came out to inspect the property.
Got it. So, and we would believe that the, uh, signage in front of the property that noticed this public hearing would be enough to let the neighbors know that if they didn't like what was going on, they should come on down and tell us?
The neighbors also, uh, received, we mailed out-
Okay.
Courtesy notices to, uh, property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius.
So if they're not here tonight or they haven't written to you, we have to believe that they don't have a problem with it, that we know about?
Not here.
All I can say is that I have not heard from them.
And a majority of that area is taken up by the elementary school across the street?
I think the, the, the issue of the encroachment for me, again, speaks mostly to the neighbor, you know, obviously on that side. So if they've been given the opportunity to respond and they haven't responded, they haven't responded.
Was the, um, complaint done anonymously or is it something that we can reveal on the record of who it was and do we know if it's the neighbor?
We do not reveal the, uh-
Okay, that's fine.
Identity of the-
Okay. Once again, I will open the public hearing. If anyone in the house wishes to come on down and comment, the podium is open. Please tell us who you are and tell us what's on your mind.
I'm Barry Gold. I live at four four one Ramona Avenue. Good evening, commissioners. I would like to suggest that you change the order of things rather than approve this and then let planning find out if everything's up to code. Request, before you take any action, that the applicant demonstrate that everything is up to code. If they have to pull wires to show you, if they have to core drill to find rebar in the slab, if they have to open up the walls to see if the studs are sixteen inches on center, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Have all that done before you even consider it. Take that burden off the staff and make them come in with evidence of that. And while they're at it, let them do the other four structures, the same thing, and make sure they're all up to code before they do anything. That's my recommendation.
Anybody else wish to speak on this issue?
Mr. Chair, um, just wanted to point out that from Preserve Sierra Madre, Matt Bryant did submit a letter, um, that you have on the dais before you. It's actually addressing both items on the agenda. The third paragraph addresses one fifty-six West Highland Avenue. Would you like me to read that?
Please.
I will say that absent a very good and plausible reason for the conduct of the applicant, this matter should be taken very seriously. A lot of people work very hard, put rules in place for development in Sierra Madre. We expect those rules to be followed and not flouted. If it is egregious, as it appears to be, then it may not be a good idea for them to get away with a mere slap on the wrist. Otherwise, the word would quickly spread among those in the building community that they can ignore our rules with impunity, and in the unlikely event that they get caught, nothing will happen. To perhaps add insult to injury, it defies common sense that the applicant intends to now permanently earmark the thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-two square foot structure as a recreation exercise building. As I said, you are all going to find out more at tonight's meeting, but I'm very skeptical from the information that I have learned thus far.
Thanks. Uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing 'cause nobody else seems to wanna talk. I'm gonna ask Laticee one more question, then I'm gonna bring it back to the desk for discussion. Uh, Mr. Gold's suggestion, is that legally feasible that we would first look at it in terms of what needed to be done to bring it up to code before we would vote on the CUP or is that not legally feasible?
I would defer that to the city attorney.
What's before you, I don't think this is working. What's before you tonight is the question about whether it conforms to the land use rules in the city. So pretend that it-
It doesn't exist.
Yet. And you're looking at the plan and does the plan and the, um, the use to which the applicant, uh, claims they will put the building, does that comply? And setback is one of your issues that's been identified. So, um, we would not normally, uh, require building, um, to work with the applicant, 'cause that is a lot of work for staff, to, um, look through and do the inspections, which the applicant would have to pay for. But to go to the trouble to, um, actually inspect and determine whether it complies with code without first knowing if, uh, this body can even approve it as it's presently configured or whether it would have to be reconfigured or walls would have to move, that, that needs to be known first and plans need, site plans need to-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about the pragmatic part of it. I'm worried about the legal part of it. Do we have the discretion to request that it's a safe building before we rule on it?
No, it's, it's just not-
We don't? Okay, that's what I need to know. So we don't have the discretion to act on Mr. Gold's suggestion?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Okay. Answering the city's attorney's question. If this came to us and it had not been built-
Right.
I would say no, this can't be built.
I think you started the discussion.
Yes, it's a discussion.
Okay. So would you like to continue?
Um, why would we allow encroachment into the side yard setback if this had not been built yet?
My, my, go ahead. Well, I wanna tag on to that, 'cause my, my thought is that, that if we're gonna look at this as if it didn't exist-
Yeah.
Even though it does, you would cite this completely in a way that you could meet the setback.
That's right.
So-
Right.
In fact, there's enough rear yard to meet the setback. I think the rear yard in R three is ten feet? The setback?
It is ten for the first story and fifteen for the second story.
Okay, well, it's, okay, so fifteen.
Apart from all-
There's forty-one feet, right? So you would, there's ample room to cite this in a way where you can meet all setbacks.
Right.
And avoid it, the encroachment.
But it would be a different footprint. You'd move it.
It would not be where it is.
Yes.
And we would not approve it to be here because there's ample place to put it elsewhere.
Unless there was hardship or a reason you couldn't-
But there was no reason, there's no, there's no reason in this, in this particular site why that building would need to have an encroachment if it had not already been built encroaching.
Right.
I, I think that, that we, we would, I, I can't imagine this commission would have approved that. We, we wouldn't have.
I, I think the reason for the, the building not going farther back on the site is the, it, the end of the building's a hundred and fifty feet, if I'm doing the math right. And typically, you sprinkler after a hundred and fifty feet, right? Right, Bob?
I think that's correct.
It may be that they didn't wanna go to the expense of sprinklering and that's why they stopped there.
Well, all residential-
But we, they could've made the building-
Some distance now.
Less wide.
It was built to code.
The, we would've required the building to be less wide, right?
I, I, I think that the whole issue of encroachment is something we can't possibly make a determination on without a survey-
Exactly.
That shows us where the property line is. And, by the way, a survey with a stamped, from a certified by a licensed surveyor, I, I, you know, I, I, how can I say this as nicely as possible? I don't find the applicant credible. So I, I, I want third-party verification. And it, it may well be that they own four feet of the other thing and then that's why that's there. But I, I think, to me, I, you know, I, I don't think the building is, is big or massive compared to the building on the west. It doesn't give me huge heartbreak, but there's a big difference between a nine-footish setback and a four or five-foot setback. And so, you know, I, I think we need to know that. And I, I also wanna know, to me, one of the things that, that goes beyond, and, and I think this, I, I know this is sort of code compliance issue, but it really goes to the siding of the buildings and not whether they're built properly, is when I walked back there, I thought, how's a fire person gonna get back here?
Right.
And also, when you look at the, the side yards for the different things, they're fenced.
There are a bunch of gates.
And, there's a bunch of gates and, and it's not paved. So when it's wet and muddy, it's gonna be a nightmare to get, get somewhere. And so I, I really want really close scrutiny from fire code to ma, to tell us before we rule on this, so we're informed by this, that the siding of these buildings is safe. Okay, I, I'm not a fire guy, but my gut feeling was, hmm, this scares me.
It's so narrow going through that area.
Well, you can touch two buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I just-
Even if it was, had the required setback on the east side, would that second story still comply with the angle plane requirement for second story?
I don't think so.
Not to angle plane in R three.
There's no, it's-
Doesn't the second floor require a bigger setback?
It does.
Uh, it does, it's fifteen. However, R three does not have angle plane requirements.
Yeah, but the side yard-
Requires that it be setback further.
How far is the se, how far is the-
It's flush.
It's flush, so it's the same-
Correct. I'll, I'll remind you that this side yard setback sentence or, or par, part in R three is not a complete sentence.
Right.
And, and it is, it's our, the way we interpret it is ten and fifteen, but you could read that all sorts of different ways, so.
Well, either way, I mean, Laticee, a quick question on, um, in R three for separation of dwelling units, is there, there is no minimum or maximum requirement? I mean, they can be butted up against each other?
If you give me a moment here, I can tell you.
Well, I don't see how that could be, 'cause you gotta have an assumed property line. Between two structures, you've got, or two houses, a building, you've gotta have an assumed property line between them.
Boy, they're not separate ownership. It's not like a condo.
Oh, I know, I know.
It, Manisha, I think this, there's rules in the R three dealing with, uh, windows that face each other.
Yeah, yes, placement of buildings, in fact, it, it's part of that. It, it's that the minimum distance between main buildings shall be twenty-five feet unless there are no openings on the exteriors of the two opposing building walls, in which case such a distance shall be no less than fifteen feet.
So that's another reason why its placement is incorrect.
So fif, you said otherwise, it has to be fifteen.
In which case, uh, let's see, in which case such a distance-
The laundry room. I mean, it's just a walkway.
That's the continuation of my question here. Is, is the laundry room count, it's not a main building, it's an accessory. So from that structure, it would need to be fifteen feet?
Unless it's a main building.
It's not a main building.
It's not a main building, it's an accessory building.
Then what's the requirement of separation?
There is no requirement for accessory buildings, distance from main buildings. It's only a distance between two main buildings.
But even this, this building D, which is what's called on the site plan, to build, the, the unit C is closer than twenty-five feet?
But if there are no windows, uh-
It's twenty-five feet is for where there's windows facing each other. So it's fifteen feet is the, is the other thing. 'Cause we, we've seen all sorts of places where the garages without windows are, are really close. And there, it just really goes down to fire code about what, what's, what's safe.
What the fire can do from jumping from one to another.
And also so the fire, uh, fighters have access through the buildings.
Okay, so I got one takeaway is I don't sense that there's gonna be a ruling on this without a survey and a better understanding of the encroachment. So there's one thing, I think, that there's probably some feedback. We're-
But this whole encroachment thing is something that is, just came up tonight. I mean, it was a statement by the applicant that is not reflected in any of the drawings or any of the evidence that, that has been presented to this commission.
Yeah, I got it. That means we're coming back to talk about it again sometime.
Or we can say no because it's not there. Because I, I, quite honestly, I, I agree with John. We're dealing with an applicant that is not forthcoming and, and seems to have a, you know, a problem with telling us what we need to know.
Isn't it up to the applicant to provide us with materials to make a decision? And he has failed to give us that information for some reason.
Yeah, but we don't usually deny projects for that. We continue them.
Say, go get the documentation.
I mean, I, we, we gotta keep in mind, we vote the project, not the applicant. It doesn't matter if, you know, the applicant i, is named, last name Carter and been here their whole life and four generations, or they're evil developer who we know is gonna sell the next day. It's the project we vote on. And so I think we need to separate our concerns about the credibility of the applicant from the project. And, and I have concerns about the project, um, and I think we need to get those addressed. But I also take note that this building is, or this collection of buildings is much less, uh, large and massive than the, the property to the west. And-
If, if this had been built correctly, it could've been a lovely, uh-
No, I, and, and I, I think, you know, one of my first reactions when I saw this is, it's really too bad they didn't come and talk to us first because I, actually, I think the new building looks pretty good. I, it, it's incredible to me that it just organically sprouted out of the ground. Um, but it's pretty cool. And, you know, I think you could've moved it a little bit and probably made it fit pretty well. So I, I'm sort of at a quandary in that. I think this probably could be made to work.
So let's talk, let's talk about the, uh-
But it needs stuff.
Yeah, well, let's, we got one thing on the table is the, uh, is the survey and the encroachment. Let's talk about the bathroom situation and what we feel about that.
I think there should be no bathrooms in this building.
I agree.
I don't think you can substitute bathrooms in this building for bathrooms in the other houses. I don't think there should be any bathrooms in there at all.
I agree.
They can walk back to their unit, which is ten feet away and go pee if they have to. I mean, you don't need to have bathrooms in there. And if we leave the bathrooms in here, then it's gonna be converted back into a housing unit.
Well, and that, and I think it's equally absurd to, to assume the necessity for the, the restroom facilities or the bathing facilities is so that you can migrate from the other dwelling units to utilize that-
And then go back.
Those facilities go back and forth.
I feel like there should be no bathrooms in this building. I see no, no reason for them.
Yeah. Other opinions?
I agree with Gina. There should be no bathrooms. There's too much, if they're able to put up a two-story building without anybody knowing it, it'd be so easy for the same, for a person to put in bathrooms and a kitchen.
I, I, I don't know. I.
No, I, I think you, there, it's getting back to your issue that we're looking at the applicant, not the project. Because an exercise room, you got bathrooms. You're exercising, you gotta go to the bathroom. You gotta, we, we do have to look at the project, the building. It's a, it's a exercise room. It's a gym.
I, I think we just, we, we need to understand that, you, you know, there are a lot of Home Depot weekend warriors. Things change on the inside without permits. That happens all the time. There's going to be bathrooms in this building. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think if we, if we really think that we, we can't ever have bathrooms in this building, or, or for that matter, a kitchen, the way to do that is to demolish the building because it's going to have a kitchen and it's going to have a bathroom.
And then it'll be rented out.
And then it'll be rented out.
And then it'll be rented out, and no one will ever know it. And then we're going to have a unit that's not legal on this property.
Right. But I, I think that, I think if we stick our head in the sand and pretend it's not going to happen and approve a building, a rec room, knowing that that's going to happen, then I fear that we've done a, a disservice. I, I think if we acknowledge that that's going to happen, we understand that that's very, okay, it's not going to happen, it's very likely. And we make sure there's at least health and safety is covered so that whoever does rent it isn't put in.
So are you saying bathrooms as is or with the shower and tub removed?
It doesn't make a difference.
But they have been removed.
No, they haven't been removed. No.
Part of our job here is to back up the development services and all in terms of making sure that the, the housing stock in the city of Sierra Madre is at least somehow compliant, you know, with, with our intentions. And we get backed into this, we can get backed into all kinds of stuff. Because all the, the message goes out is, okay, we'll just build it.
Right.
And then we'll, you know, we'll come down and we'll plead and we'll make ourselves look sad, you know, sad. And, you know, the people will say, well, it looks nice. I guess we'll approve it.
I, I agree. I, I think, I think one of the things we need to add on our to-do list of code things is how we treat people who build without permits, and even, even more problematic than building without permits. Because you can go do code compliance, is building without zoning review. I mean, that, like I said, there's a lot of weekend warriors, building a two-story structure without, that records a CUPs. That's something.
Especially, especially when there is evidence that, that, that people knew all about how to build and knew all about building permits. And this is not someone who came here from, you know, Syria yesterday and just, you know, needed to house his family. I mean, this was a conscious effort, I think, in order to, to, to add to rental income. And, you know, and for us to get backed into things by saying, well, you know, it's, you know, they need it for Thanksgiving, I, you know, I. Is there a need for an exercise building? I mean, how many exercise buildings do we have and have come before this commission? Like, well, this is something that we, that needs to happen in Sierra Madre.
So, Mr. Silesian, you're sensing some displeasure, I can tell from the commission. And I think we're going to be moving towards some decision here. Would you like to come down and entertain any comments on what we've been talking about? It's a tough situation.
Yeah, yeah, just listening to your concerns, I, I can see, I can see that. I understand your perspective. I see that you're disappointed. Yeah, I want to say I'm sorry that I didn't go through the right steps. I didn't really know the right steps. That's true. Now that I'm learning the right steps, Tisha's been helping me. I can see, I've been working with an architect, and it's been an enjoyable, enjoyable experience. And I've been learning how to, you know, to understand, you know, the right way to do things. And to be honest, I didn't intend, you know, to be, you know, doing this. But, you know, when I bought the property with my brothers, I kind of got thrust into it. And I'm doing.
Thrust into it.
Basically, I, you know, as the older brother, they put me in the, you know, position to, you know, maintain the property and look after the property. And I felt a little bit responsible, you know, talking them into, you know, working together. And, and, you know, basically, I'm trying to provide a place for us to, you know, enjoy, you know. We love the community here. We love the city here. We came here because, you know, we grew up here and we love it, and it's just such a beautiful place.
So I don't know where the commission's going to go on this, but between the commission's requests and compliance with building codes and such, you're looking at some pretty not insignificant investments. So you prepared to pay what it costs to do what's right?
Oh, yeah. I'm ready to, you know, work with the building department. They can come over. We can do some engineering plans. We can open up walls. We can look at the, the wires. We can look at the, you know, the plumbing. We can take a look at everything. And, you know, I'm, I've already talked to the fire department. We're going to put in the sprinklers. We're going to make sure everything's up to code, make sure it's, you know, ready for the future, ready for, you know, ready for use.
And you, and your point of view, whether we take it at face value or not, is that you intend to move on to the property and this not going to be another rental unit on the property?
This, this house, I've been living, I'm 43 years old. I moved home so I could basically use my money for, to, for this property. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this place, but I had to, you know, put a new roof on and do a lot of, you know, stuff.
It could have been a lovely property. It's a nice footprint. The other buildings are quaint and charming. If we had started with plans, every, no one's, no one's denying, we're trying to get it to a place where we're not setting a precedent for the community that you can ask forgiveness instead of permission because that's not our job. So I'm trying to find a soft landing here, if there is one.
It was supposed to be where I was going to live. That's why I took such a.
But now it's not going to have bathrooms. So what are you going to do?
So I'm going to move back to the, the middle house, where I'm supposed to be. But like I said, I'm running up a lot of expense here. So I'm using the rental income to help pay for my.
So if we say no showers and no tubs, you're okay with that?
Uh, yeah.
And if we say no bathrooms, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you want a rec room on that property somehow, some way that complies with the municipal code?
We can't even sit in the room together. There's, the houses aren't even, even, they're small. They're tiny. They're like munchkin, you know, they're munchkin houses. This, this is finally a place where we can all be together. That's a great, you know, ending result. I'm happy with that.
I'd like to ask you, are the houses smaller now than when you bought them?
They're the same. And they all, they all are permitted. I have the permits for all those.
So.
Really?
You knew what you're buying.
So you knew to get permits?
No, I mean, Letitia had me go to the, this, the LA, what is it, the planning department in, in Lower Brazusa? And I got the, this is after, after the fact. We went down there and got all the, the original plans and the original permit information from the LA assessor's office or something. This is after, while we were doing our application.
What I'm getting at is when you bought the property and you planned to live there, you knew what you were planning to move into?
No, no.
You didn't know?
No, I didn't know.
That it was little?
No, I, I, I was plann, we were just planning to live in the, the units that were there.
Right. And now they're not large enough for you?
Well, the, the two, so my brother and his wife and the, the two kids live in the front house, so that's, that's out. I mean, you know, and the other houses are very small. They're, they don't, you know.
But what I'm getting at is you knew that when you bought it, that your brother and his wife were going to live in the front house, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that you were going to live in one of the smaller ones?
Mm-hmm.
So what's changed?
Well, I'm going to be in there. So I'm going to be moving in there, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I just.
Thanks. You can sit down.
Thank you.
We may have another, I don't know.
I, okay, I just want to get this off here. I, I don't even see, I just can't make this encroachment work. I don't care if the survey shows this or that. It's, it's encroaching, and it, it did not have to be. There is no hardship or anything pinning this structure in to, to its location. And.
Well, if the, if this, if the property line is where he says it is, then it could make the 10%. That's.
That's not where the wall is, and that's not where the.
We understand, but when we find the actual information, it's possible that it's, it's a less egregious encroachment.
But on that encroachment, the 10%, is that, that's discretionary in the sense of like, if they meet that 9.8%, then they have to be given that?
They don't have to be given. If you don't feel like you made the finding to approve it.
Yeah, because the, the, the building could have easily been cited in a way that would have met.
Wasn't necessary.
Wasn't necessary, period. That's, that's the point I'm getting at. I, I don't feel like.
There was room to put it in the right place.
That's the point I was making, which is that if this had come to us before it was built for a conditional use permit, we would have said no.
No.
This is what I'm saying now, no.
So that's, on that, on that basis, I, I think it's an emphatic no. I think lop off the building or whatever needs to happen to, to meet, you know, if this was on, on drawings brought to us and hadn't been built yet, we would, in a heartbeat, say, cite it in a way that you meet the requirement.
All the requirements, right?
Yeah.
That's what we would have said. I, that's what I would have said. So.
So I don't know why we're going to bend over backwards to kind of like make that.
That's the decision which I would have made if this building had been built. I'm asking our counsel that question.
That is the correct analysis.
The correct analysis is that I cannot approve this because that's what, assuming it wasn't built, I would not approve it.
That's, that's your task this evening. You're looking at the sighting and the land use approval, given the application. Don't pretend it hasn't been built. And your task is to look and see if.
And so if we, if we, if a majority of the commission does not grant, we vote and does not grant the CUP, then what happens?
Then it remains a code enforcement problem. Or you can suggest to the applicant changes that would need to be made to the site plan because that's what you would normally do if it hadn't been built yet to.
So we can continue the hearing and say, bring us back a plan that conforms to the municipal code and we'll consider it. And then we approve that, and then they have to modify the structure to make it be that?
That is, that is one outcome, yes.
Okay, so we would not vote it down. We would continue it for a modification that conformed to code?
Correct.
So somebody could make that motion and we could vote on that?
That, that's correct.
What's another, so what if we just uniformly say, no, we're not, we're not approving the CUP? What happens then?
Uh, then it's an unpermitted structure. It's a violation of city code. And there will be further code enforcement to address that.
So it comes back anyway, or?
Not to this body.
Not to this body. Where does it come back?
Ultimately, on the code enforcement side, does it result in the structure being removed?
Yeah, it has to.
Yes.
If you don't approve a CUP, which is required for development in the R3.
Letitia, can you make sure your microphone is on because it's not going to be.
It's going in and out.
Use the other one then.
Yeah, the red light's not on.
Mine's not either. I'm just talking loud.
A CUP is required for development in the R3 zone, and if the CUP is not approved, then the, the structure has to be demolished. So the code enforcement process will continue until that structure is demolished.
So in no way, shape, or form would this structure sort of remain in limbo and exist post sort of our decision-making here?
That is correct. We would continue that process up to the point when they demo the building.
Now, what happens, let me flip the question. Let's say we, you know, make recommendations on how to cite this, this property in a better way that meets the requirements, the zoning requirements. And the applicant comes back with said plan showing it's been changed or altered. And we go forward and we approve that, then all of a sudden the applicant says, well, I, you know, as they've currently stated here, we're renting out this unit just to, to pay for the CUP fees. Let's say, they say, well, it's a hardship. We can't, we can't modify the structure to said approved requirement. What happens then?
Then the CUP, correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but the CUP then would be revoked, I believe, because they cannot comply with the conditions of approval.
So it would come back?
It would come back for a revocation, or the CUP would expire after a certain period of time where they didn't make the modifications necessary, and you would still have a code enforcement problem on site.
Then it would go back to?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Silesian? Again, I, I'm not, I'm just asking a question before there's any action taken. If this panel were to ask you to resubmit a plan that conformed to code, is that something that you would be willing to do? Understanding that if we approved that, and that would, you would have to make the modifications to the structure to conform to what the CUP actually approved?
So you're, you're saying, so am I willing to do that work? Is that the question?
If, what I, I don't, I want to, don't want to waste the panel's time. If the panel continues the matter to a date uncertain, you would have to resubmit a site plan that conformed to code. We would then discuss it.
Yes.
And if it conformed to code, we would approve it.
Yes.
You would then have to make the structural improvements up to and including potentially changing the footprint of the building.
I'm willing to change the footprint of the building.
Yeah.
I think, I, I would ask and, and hope that you allow it to stay the way it is. It's built.
I don't think that's going to happen. I can't vote for the other commissioners, but from what I'm hearing tonight, I don't think that's very likely.
If that's the requirement, I will be willing to.
I can. I'm just trying, before I ask for a vote, to find something that's a soft landing for everybody. And I don't want to have them vote on something that you're not going to want to do.
I, I can do that, yes.
Okay.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to.
There's another finding that, you know, the, there's a demonstrated need for this. Can, how is that possible?
Why don't we ask Letitia, since she made the finding?
You know, I.
Let's. Stay close. We may need you again.
If there's a child that needs physical therapy, I guess, and there needs to be a place for that.
Let's, 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 let's hear how staff made the finding.
That would be the finding number, number four, and that there is a demonstrated need for the use requested. In the way that staff provided this finding, responded to this finding is that, in that the proposed recreation exercise building would help meet the R3 zone requirement for common usable recreational area, thereby improving the multifamily residential use of the subject property. Since the building is already constructed, allowing, well, that goes on to the encroachment. I don't need to.
Does that, the common recreational use, does that have to be an indoor enclosed space?
It doesn't have to.
So it could be outdoor space?
It could be either one. It could be a combination.
It could be a covered.
That space already.
Yes. It could be entirely open space. It does not have to be in a recreation building.
So that space already existed there if it were just dirt in the backyard?
Yes. Yes. That is correct.
Okay, but it, but the finding can be made.
I, I think one other way to look at this is if we look at the R3 code, there's minimums, unit sizes. And, and at least one, I think, both of the smaller ones are under those minimum sizes. So even though these aren't actually part of those units, they help alleviate the issue that those units are undersized. That, that finding doesn't give me an option.
So I'm finding.
It's not the need of the applicant that drives this? The applicant doesn't, doesn't help us with the need?
I think that.
It's the community.
It's, it's the demonstrated need in the community. We, we need housing. This improves the housing stock.
Do we need recreational housing? We're, a building, do we need a building that's, that is landlocked inside of a, of, of this property that is built solely for recreation?
If it's safe, it doesn't give me any heartache.
I, I think the issue here is that we have in the R3 code a minimum unit sizes. We have a discussion of community recreation areas. I think the better way to do it would just be to make those other units bigger. But if the applicant says, look, we're really a big communal family and we want to have these big group meetings, you know.
What if he took you up on, again, if we sent them away and said, bring us back a plan that meets code, what if he took you up on your suggestion and converted the smaller unit to the recreational space and the larger unit, assuming that the footprint was conforming?
We still don't have parking, and it would have to have adequate parking.
Right, I think.
No, you have, you're back, instead of the, the rear unit, it was your idea, and it's not a bad one.
Yeah, but there's, there would have to be adequate parking for this building.
How does it change? How does it change?
Well, I get.
It's a building.
No, no, no. The, the rear building becomes the residence, and the small building.
It's a new residential structure.
Because it's a new structure. You'd have to come up to code on parking.
For the non-conforming ones that are already on the property, that, that.
They're grandfathered.
They're grandfathered in, right?
Oh, I see.
But since, the way they're getting around the parking is it's a rec.
The bigger parking issue there is that it, you could claim it's an intensification of use. Because if you have a, a unit that's, what was it, 500, less than 500 feet, and then. Because if you have a, a unit that's, what was it, five hundred, less than 500 feet, and then you're swapping that out for 1,300 square foot, you, you're, you're more likely to demand more cars, even if you could say, I'm going to take that 500 square foot footprint.
If I may, um, as long as your substitution doesn't increase the degree of nonconformity in terms of parking. That's what you would need to look at. You would have to analyze that.
That's the question.
So it's a possibility.
Because what you're doing is you're flipping, you're basically flipping that, that same need that you have today. You, at the end of the day, if you still have the same need, because now you're taking.
But it's a bigger building.
You would, you would have to do like for like, so that you're, you would have to calculate it out to make sure that at the end of the day, you do not end up with more requirement for parking.
But the issue is our parking code doesn't go by bedrooms or square footage, it goes by units. So theoretically.
I'm sorry, in the R3 does, actually.
It's a possibility, we can leave it. So I am becoming sympathetic to the idea of continuing this if the applicant is acting in good faith to resubmit a plan that conforms to code with the belief that if we approve that plan, that you will make the modifications and the investments necessary to build the structure or realign the property along those lines. Does anybody want to comment? I can't make the motion because I'm the chair. Does anybody want to speak to a lack of sympathy for that?
I, I've got to say, I, this, the, I'm probably in the minority here, but the encroachment does not. If I have a survey that shows me it's actually the, the, the right amount, and it's not a lot smaller, the encroachment doesn't give me as much problem as everybody else. I think it is somewhat in line with two of the other buildings. The neighbor to the east is just a backyard. This isn't a big building. It, I, I, I guess I would typically want to hear from an applicant a good reason why they wanted to do this, but I don't see that it, it's really unreasonably interfering on the neighbor. So, you know, ma- again, maybe I'm in the minority here, but what I would want to see before I would approve that is a, um, a survey that shows the property lines and the location of all the buildings certified by a licensed surveyor. I also have.
At which point, if it conformed to the 9.8, you'd be fine with it?
I'm saying I'm willing to entertain it. I'm, I'm not.
Well, I need, we need a motion of action here tonight. So if we send him off to do something, he, we got to be ready to act on it when he brings it back.
I think there's no need for the encroachment, period. I don't care what percentage it is. There's no need for that if this building was cited in a proper manner, regardless of where the setback lies. Whether you, your opinion is it's far enough away or close enough away, or it's looking into a backyard. Right now, the, on the street there, it's less than five feet away from that fence. Now, fine, let's, I'm all for getting a survey, licensed survey, that tells me there's another four feet of property.
We're going to need that to show that whatever the plan is, conforms regardless, so.
There should be no encroachment. There's no reason that this cannot meet the zoned setback requirements, period, paragraph.
Okay, so are you sympathetic to a motion that would cause the applicant to submit a new plan that would fully conform to code without encroachment, and if we brought that back and looked at it with the supporting material of the survey, and he agreed, and we approved that, and he agreed to build that, is that a path that you'd be willing to go down?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. So there's potential sympathy for a motion along those lines. Someone would have to make such a motion.
Hey, I, I think e- even if we make such a motion, we should, we should give the applicant more direction as to what we want to see, so that they're not.
Let's see something that conforms to code without encroachment. It's got a, it's letter of the law.
That's not enough for me. I mean, I, because we, I think we need to address the bathroom issue.
Yeah.
Uh, because it's not fair to the applicant to say, okay, do this, but we're going to hide the ball in the bathroom. Because we, we know enough, we could vote on the bathroom. The other thing is, I would like to see a landscape plan that includes hardscaping in between the buildings, so they're not, uh, just dirt. I, I, that to me strikes me as a safety issue. And, um, so I, I would like to see that.
Is that within our purview?
Sure.
Okay, so it's within our purview to request that it conforms to code without encroachment. It's within our purview to put a bathroom condition on, and it's within our purview to request hardscaping between the buildings.
And it's in our purview if they come back with the information to deny? Depending on what the information is.
You know, we're going through down this road, and, and I still haven't heard that, that there's the need. You know, where, where did the need come in for, for the structure in the first place? We've taken somebody's word for it, but we've already just heard tonight that there, there's two rentals on the property. So the family isn't there. How many people are in this family? I mean, you, you got a building there that you can put 20 people in. Is that how many there are around? There are not 20 people on that property.
I find, I, I, I. This building, okay, so, so I'm having a hard time getting my mind around this issue of need, because this building wasn't built with that need in mind, right? So this need has been created ex post facto to make a need exist for this building. This building was built as a housing unit. That's what, that was the need they perceived to build. Now suddenly, we're given this idea that, well, there actually is a need for recreation because we have to develop some need for this building.
Well, I, I think the problem, the problem there is we're dealing with an existing building. And, and, and we, we, we go on the hypothetical that this is a plan that we're reviewing, and so all that stuff that came before is water under the bridge.
Commissioner Hut, could I ask you to try a motion out on the commission and we can see if we can get a majority?
I don't think we've had full discussion yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'd, I'd like to want, add one other thing if we are going to have this motion. That if there is some patio, especially if it's a covered patio in the back, that that be designed and shown to us as well. Because I don't want to get other stuff that's going to get permitted later. I would like to see.
Will a covered patio count for square footage?
Well, it, it probably, but it, they got plenty of room. I mean, that, one of the things that actually is sort of good about this project is.
It's small.
It, it really is not pushing the boundaries of the floor area at all. So, you know, that's one, one good thing to say. Uh, but I, I do want to see, if they're going to have a project, please give us the plans for the whole project, not part of it, and say, we're going to permit some other part later.
Well, Matt, well, you had a good point, I mean, a good reason. I mean, I think the whole bathroom, restroom, shower thing, I mean, on face value, if we're going to take it as an exercise, recreation room, you know, like a club room or a community house or something. I mean, I think case can be made that it's not unreasonable to have a sink and a toilet.
Yeah.
In said structure, um, as much as it grieves me to kind of come to that point, but I, I feel like if we're going to give direction for any sort of revision, that I think completely excluding it is probably not fair.
If you go upstairs and you look at where the tub is, they've put a wall betw- with a tub behind it, and you go around the other side and the wall is still there, there's, there's an enclosure, there's a place for a tub.
Well, I.
A guy with a drywall knife can make that space reappear, and suddenly there's a tub. So I'm, you know.
To my, to further that point, the direction would be that they would be true sort of non-bathing facilities. So the, the shower in the current plan would have to be completely removed, and that space would have to be annexed to the storage or whatever it is, but that, it wouldn't just be a wall with.
Plus, they'd have to like take plumbing out.
And the plumbing would have to be.
The plumbing, remove the plumbing.
Completely.
Can I ask one more question of the applicant? What do you got for water meters going on that site right now? How many water meters do you have on that site? Now you, you've added this.
We only have one water meter.
So you added this 1,300 square foot building with numerous bathrooms. You've got that additional water load pulling through that water meter, and you've got the additional sewage, sewage load on the, on.
What's the rule about water meters in new structures? Currently?
Can't tell you.
They are not permitted for new construction if there is not a water meter on the site. Usually it would be for a vacant parcel.
So, isn't the city under a?
Wait a second, it's allowable to add a new, in, in our current rules about water, it's allowable to add a new building like this onto an existing meter? Is that allowed?
In R3, probably not. You would need a, a second or another meter.
So this is breaking the rules having to do with water meters as well? Could we check on that, make sure?
Well, especially with regard to the moratorium.
Isn't there a moratorium on?
That's a huge problem.
There is. They can't get us, they cannot get a new meter.
But under the moratorium.
For them to add on to the current meter?
I'm sorry.
That's a, that's a code question that I can't answer.
Can someone please get us the answer to that question?
Let me ask you a question under the moratorium. Assuming that they either wanted to or were required under code to get a bigger meter to handle the new water load. Is that something that's permitted under the moratorium, or is it only, you can't add a new one?
You can also not size up. You cannot upsize and you cannot get a new one.
We need, we need the answer to this question. Because that's a huge issue in Sierra Madre.
There is one exception for being able to upsize, and that's if you need to upsize for the purpose of installing fire sprinklers.
Which would be required for this building.
Which would be required.
But just to, because the building wasn't there at all, you couldn't make that argument. It would have to be adding fire sprinklers onto an existing building.
Well, it would have to, this building would have to be built with fire sprinklers, and then I guess they would make the argument.
I, I feel very strongly we need an answer to this question about the water meter issue.
Oh, it's huge. Is that, is that, is that a matter, is that a matter of?
Into an existing meter.
Is that a matter of zoning and land use?
Flow rate that they have to show.
I would think so.
And you, and, and if you're already running through one meter, you're, you're going to have to upsize in order to get the flow out of the sprinkler heads to cover the, so. And that has to, that, that, that's one side, that's another job that's done by somebody with a license.
Yeah, that's where I, what I was thinking. When the mechanical engineer eventually does the plumbing calc for this new building, if we were to allow the bathrooms or whatever they're going to have, I don't see how it's going to calc out.
I really don't see how, given our water issues in Sierra Madre, I could not approve it if that's not.
Might be dead in the water.
Yeah.
Okay. We want more discussion, or someone want to try to propose an action?
I propose that we deny the permit.
A motion, a second to deny, hang on.
If you proceed with a denial, staff asks that you make, you know, you, you provide the findings for denial.
That they, that the setback is not, is out of compliance and that there is no demonstrated need.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Before we go on, I guess I would like to strengthen the finding, the, the denial of findings before we go forward. I agree that there is no demonstrated need for, for the use requested because there was recreation space there before, and this is not necessary. The issue of the encroachment. I have a question about how to word this. So if we, if we find that the encroachment is not necessary, does that fall into the first finding, the site is, is, for the pro's use is adequate? Well, the site is adequate, it would be adequate without the encroachment, so that there's no need for this encroachment. So I can't make that finding. Right?
Smart.
And then. I, I, I think perhaps we can't make finding five in terms of the general plan, in terms of water use.
Potential impact.
Yeah, potential impact on water usage i- in, in the city. Does anyone else have any other comments about this?
I'm, I'm not as lying, I'm not lining up there. I would like, my opinion is, if the motion is going to be, uh, to deny, I'm going to vote against because I think they should be given a chance to bring it into compliance. But that's one person's opinion.
Can they come back and try to bring it into compliance and apply again?
They can make a new application with, for a new plan, or they could appeal to the city council.
I'm very comfortable having them appeal to the city council.
And I also can't make finding six, so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the permit. A vote for is a vote to deny. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand so we can see who it is. One, two, three, four, five. Against? Two. Permit's denied. CUP, yes?
If I may, um, before you continue, Gina, you mentioned that you cannot make finding six.
Mm-hmm.
What would, can you elaborate on that, please?
Public, okay, it's finding six is the public interest convenience and necessity require that the use be permitted at the location requested.
Isn't that the water? That's, isn't, isn't that the, the water?
That's five.
I have a procedural question on, on how we handle this. Do we actually deny it tonight and monkey with the findings? So it's, it's a done item now, or do we continue it to the next meeting so that a resolution of denial can come back?
You can continue and, and direct staff to bring a resolution for denial.
I, I guess more than can is, what did we just do?
We just denied the permit on the basis of the cited findings that weren't met by five of the people who voted.
Okay, so we're not going to bring back a resolution, we're done tonight? Okay.
I think the follow-up item is there's going to be a resolution of denial, but that basically we just, we just did, we.
If you put the findings in the record this evening, staff will after the fact, um, capture those in a resolution that reflects the action you took. And then it won't be necessary to, will simply conform the resolution to the findings that you put in the record. If you want instead to, you know, continue the meeting so that we bring back the resolution as a consent item to reflect the findings so that you can, you know, uh, look at them before you approve them, we can do that as well.
Did we took a vote?
You did take a vote to deny.
Okay.
To, to that effect, though, were we clear, clear as far as the findings? Well, you're, yes or no, as far as?
So they'll be given, they'll be given a resolution of denial, and if they want to appeal to the city council, they'll appeal it on the basis of that?
Yeah.
Gina, why, what, what was your?
And that the proposed project will be used for multi-residential.
I think the point on six is that a 1,300 square foot rec room isn't required.
It's not a necessity, yes.
Okay. So there will be a record of this in the form of a resolution adopted at the next meeting, I believe at the next meeting?
Is, is, uh, yes, we can bring back the resolution at the next meeting. Um, and you can approve it as deformed, and, uh, then at that point in time, that's when the appeal period starts, when the resolution is approved, if you want to do it that way.
Got it.
Okay, so the, I, because that's not what I understood. I thought we were doing it tonight.
I, I thought so too. That's, um.
So I, I think we need to be 100% clear when the appeal period starts, because it's really not fair if we hide the ball in that and somebody misses the appeal.
The motion was to deny, so I assumed it was going to start tonight.
That's good.
I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we're.
If that's the case, then we will not be bringing back the resolution for your approval as to.
So the minutes will cite, the minutes will cite the findings that were not met?
That, that's correct, and, um, the, and a resolution will be captured, which the, will be provided to the chair for, for signature within the next couple of days. And the resolution will capture the findings that were put into the record tonight.
Can I ask, since I voted against it, that that resolution be circulated amongst the com- against commissioners who voted for it? Make sure that it accurately captures their point of view?
Can we just have the vice chair sign it? No, I mean, because that seems like Brown Act issue to me.
Yeah, it, it, it does to me a bit. Um, if, you, you could delegate the, um, signing to, uh, somebody else on the commission. That's okay.
I'll delegate that to the vice chair. Okay, are we clear?
We are clear.
Are you clear? So you will have the minutes available. They'll be published, the findings that were not met upon which your CUP was denied. And your appeal period begins tonight. What's the period?
Well, technically.
Tomorrow. What's the period?
14 days.
14 days to.
14 days to file an appeal, and the procedures for that, if they wish to do that, are available where?
In the municipal code, and, um, the, that will also be reflected in the resolution and the notice that will be sent to the applicant with a copy of the resolution.
Okay. Got it. I'm sorry. 10 minute break?
Yes.
Okay.
The commission also discussed the issue of home size versus density and then asked staff to determine whether it would be possible to provide some flexibility in the R1 standards to allow smaller lot sizes than that required under the subzone, as long as the subdivided agreed to limit the combined floor area of the new houses to the maximum square footage allowed for the subject lot in the underlying zone. Staff provided draft language to that effect, therefore verified that that can be done in your staff report for your consideration. Regarding the condition use permit findings, staff has included the draft prepared by the subcommittee with proposed revisions to the findings for your consideration. And finally regarding fire department access requirements, the commission directed staff to provide information regarding minimum fire code standards for access easements. That was included in your staff report as requested. And also regarding the minimum requirement for access easements, just keep in mind that whether that's an access easement or an actual flag lot or driveway access, the requirement is always the same for fire department. It doesn't matter whether it's an access easement or an actual part of the property that is a flag lot, for example. At this meeting, staff is seeking further direction from the planning commission and this concludes my report.
So is the basic task here tonight to go through the red line exhibits and see if we're happy with the language that reflects our intentions? Is that what we're looking to accomplish?
You're going to be reviewing information and making a determination if you're ready in terms of minimum lot sizes. Do you wish to change the minimum lot sizes in the R1? That's ultimately the discussion. And then also in terms of how you'd like to do this, along with that discussion you had at the last meeting, are you looking to...
Well, I'm picking up in the middle, so I don't know how far you got into it. Looks like you got pretty far in terms of specificity.
Well, that's on the findings.
Yeah.
On the findings.
So one of the things is Leslie has to cut out for the lot size, so we need to sort of take each section.
Okay.
She needs to recuse herself for the lot size portion.
Okay.
So if we want to do that first.
Would you like to recuse yourself while we talk about the lot size? There's a lovely hallway out there. I used to sit in it during the One Carter hearings.
Last time I got to sit in the back row.
They didn't let me sit in the back row, but you know, maybe it was a tougher chairman. I think his name was Spears.
Yeah, you have to actually leave the room.
You have to leave the room.
So on this, I was chairing that meeting.
Would you like to chair the rest of this meeting?
No, I would not. I'd like to clarify where we are. Yeah, right. On the first issue, we sort of had some discussion about it. We wanted to get some more information in order to have some more discussion about it.
Right, about the lots.
About the lot split and how that would work and exactly what would happen, because I could use a little more clarification on that, too, because I find it incredibly confusing exactly how that would work.
I think John muddied it up. Yeah, well, that's usually how it goes, right? And staff came in and saved the day, because I think this suggestion about going to the gross floor area in 1721-25 is way more elegant than...
The combo.
Than the combo that I suggested. And this achieves very much the same point, which is that it's not that we're going to necessarily limit lot splits. What we're going to do is try to control the amount of square footage, so you don't have lot splits that then have big houses. So if you're going to split, you're going to have smaller houses, so the overall development intensity is not as much.
Do you mind just walking through, or maybe we can have us just walk through like, what's going to happen in an example case?
Yeah.
It's 15,000.
Right, well, I mean, let me just say one thing. I do have a concern, though, that if we say it's the exact same amount of square footage that you could build, that there's very little incentive to split the lot at all. And then I'm afraid we're going to end up with almost no lot splits and really big McManses. We might have swung too far. And so I think, one of the things that struck me, and I ran some spreadsheets to try to figure out, and this is really complicated stuff, I'll say this just up front, I think the lot size issue, we're still deep in the weeds and we need a lot more discussion. And all of the other issues, we seem to be pretty close. Also considering that because of the water moratorium, no one can split any lots now, but they can build buildings and build additions, that I suggest we talk about this more tonight, but that we continue this part of it in discussion and then move everything else, if we're close enough, if we get there on the CUP findings, towards actual public hearing and move those things on.
Can we split those and send the changes in the findings up for approval?
Sure. Yeah, this is all for discussion tonight, so you can decide how to parse it out and do what you want.
Okay, so I'm saying, so we can get some concrete progress.
I think this is a really complicated issue, because it's a really, it's a really big policy issue. I mean, it's a policy issue.
Yeah, I agree.
What do you prefer? Do you prefer to have fewer big houses or a larger number of small houses potentially built in the city? And I think this is a policy issue, which...
But we're only talking about a potential of, what, 40 lots is what we're talking about?
If we go to a larger front yard setback.
But, I mean, that is a policy issue that we need to think about before we make a decision. What is the feeling about this? I mean, I know what my feeling is, but I think we really need to, we really need to think about what the impacts would be. I mean, it's not a huge number of lots, so...
Right, right. And the other thing is, even though...
But I don't even know if we need to fiddle with it personally.
Even though all those lots, there's the potential for 58 lots, many of those, there's not feasibly that there could be. So the actual ability of lots to split practically is going to be a lot less.
Right.
And I think, the only thing that I think everyone agrees on is what we don't want is more big houses. So, you know, we've talked about maybe more houses that are smaller or fewer that are big, but I think one of the problems that we have under our current code is there is the ability to have more and bigger.
Right.
And that's, and that's something we need to think about, even if it's only 10 lots that split.
But how do we, how do we reward people for splitting the lot and keeping the house smaller?
Well, I think one of the things is, we try to look at the balance, and one of the things to keep in mind is, when you sell a house, you sell, the square footage that you see on the MLS is the habitable square footage in the house. They don't count the garage, even though our square footage, we count the garage.
Right.
So because we require a two-car garage for every house, unless it's a really big house that requires three...
It looks bigger.
But the thing is, and if you have the same square footage, you're effectively going to have less sellable square footage.
Interesting.
And so there's an economic disincentive to do that splitting, even if you don't take into account the cost, time, and risk of doing, processing the entitlement.
Right.
So if we said the exact same amount of square footage, I think we're going to get very, very few lot splits. And so one of the questions I had to counsel is, what ability do we have legally to say, okay, you get the same plus maybe some other, or can we use this other formula? I mean, how much flexibility do we have in doing that?
Well, I think it depends on the goal of the policy. For example, if one of the goals of the policy regarding lot splits is to sort of mitigate for an increased density, which means you've got more buildings in the same space of the original larger lot, if you split them, then that, if that's one of the issues that you have, is you want to preserve as much green space as possible and get away from the larger density, then that policy decision supports your original idea, which is if you split the lot, the maximum gross floor area that you can have is the maximum that you had on the original lot. And then you need to split it between, you know, whether it's, you know, the two lots. And the reason that's okay, I mean, if that's the direction that you want to go, is because you're putting a value on the open space and the less dense feel, because you're correct that, you know, you're either going to get one larger lot with a bigger house or a couple of smaller lots with smaller houses. And there's a different, there is a different burden with the one large, you know, the bigger lot with the big house and then two extra lots with smaller houses. You're going to have less green space with the two extra houses, even though they're smaller than the one big one. So it really depends on what you, you know, what you want to see the development look like. And then we back into it, the findings and the rational relationship.
So if we wanted to say something like, you get the same amount, but you get 500 extra for each new lot, so that there's some incentive to actually split...
You could say that, yeah.
Or could we say, instead of doing it that way, could we say, here's the floor area rules for existing lots, and here's just a new table of floor area rules that's a lot lower for new lots? Or is that going too far?
No, you could do it if, you could say that if your rationale is, because we're allowing you to, you know, split the lot and we're going to have therefore more dense development in town, we want to mitigate that by finding a way to create more open space. And the way to do that is to, you know, have a different scale or a different table for what's the gross, what's the maximum size you can build on those two smaller lots. So the answer is yes, you can, it's just different ways to do it.
The real crux of the issue to me is, the way we, the way this language right now is on the table, I think you're correct, it's moving it towards disincentivizing splitting the lot, because, you know, you can get all that square footage into one property on a larger lot, but I don't know, I mean, I guess that's the discussion, like, how do we feel about increased density of smaller units versus...
And water use.
That, everything associated with that, versus if you had like a 15,000 square foot lot, which is the minimum required to split, and you built, I don't know, whatever it is, 40 something, whatever the math turns out to be, on that 15,000 square foot lot, is that better, worse, the same, you know?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It goes back to what Gina was saying. These are policy questions.
And I think, I mean, I'll tell you what I think. I would just as soon leave it the way it is. That's how I feel about it.
Which says, which sends which behavior?
I would rather incent the ability to have more smaller houses.
On smaller lots.
On smaller lots. I mean, not in so much incentivize it, but allow it. I don't really...
I think that reflects, though, the community as a whole. I don't think we have, by and large, in our, in this community, we have, we've shied away from huge buildings on vast lots. Although we have some vast lots...
And some huge buildings.
And some huge buildings, but they are more the exception and they're not the, they don't reflect the, what the community seems to be looking for. I think that, I think the smaller buildings on smaller lots is more what you're likely to find as you drive up and down most of the streets in town.
Right, but if you polled people and said, are you in favor of lot splits, do you think you'd get a, I mean, I don't sense that that would be...
But it's what they get when they split the lot. And I think what John is on to is that, how do we, how do we, we once had this commission, somebody came and did a presentation on how do you pencil out whether a project will make sense? We were trying, I think, getting, getting something in place where Taylor's is. And, you know, well, we want, we wanted Whole Foods, or we wanted, I don't know, some, you know, and...
Fresh and easy, they're out of, fresh and easy, they're out of business now.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense the way it pencils in. And I think we would be smarter if we recognized that in our policy and practice, that there are things that we can do to incentivize it and make it, and lead them to say, you know what, it is better to have smaller houses here, because the city code encourages that. As opposed to, I'm going to build the biggest thing I can so I can, you know, maximize my...
And the pressure, to me, the pressure in town feels more towards maximizing gigantic houses than anything else.
Yeah, but at the same time, like, we've instituted policy changes, or code changes, where, you know, we didn't limit it to, you can build 100 square foot house, but we've definitely brought more in line with what you can build. I mean, it's less.
Right.
Right? Okay, so, on the one hand to say, well, we just, we don't want these big houses that are from, you know, setback to setback to setback, you know, that's what we, I mean, I think you're right, but I also feel like there's an, there is a sentiment as well that if you had a large lot, you know, the few that we have in town, and you had a building on it, a dwelling unit, that the open space around it and the relief around it is just as welcome as having like three houses in that same lot, or two, or whatever it is, like...
That's what I agree with.
That's sort of what I like.
You know what I mean? Like, why...
I mean, if you've got a big lot and you've got enough side yards, and some of the best looking buildings in town are big houses on big lots. The Green House on Laurel, I think, on Highland, you know, the historical one. It's just gorgeous. It's a treasure of the city. You know? I'm not opposed to it.
I think you can see it that way as well. I don't think it's just like...
I, I, I see what you're saying. And I think that that can be done. I think that having multiple smaller can, can yield much the same. I think the current code, I think, allows us to get too many, too big. But I think that there's sort of a bigger, or policy issue, when you get beyond just the issue of open space and, you know, whether a good-looking house can be built that fits appropriately, is sort of a, sort of cultural issue in the town. And that's, what do we want our town to look like? And what is the makeup? And to me, one thing I've always loved about this town is the eclectic feel, the fact that you have all sorts of different kind of houses, big ones, little ones, weird ones, tall ones. And, you know, I have a friend who lives in Hastings Ranch, and he said, I looked into Sierra Madre, but I didn't like, because the houses are different. And I said, good, you picked the right place, you know? But that's not my gig. And I'm afraid that if we make it too easy to make lots of big houses, then we're, that's where the economic pressure is now, we're going to get lots of big houses. And that's going to change the culture and feel of the town. And I don't think it's going to be an issue, especially if we work on the CUP findings, that we're going to have ugly big houses. We're going to have good-looking houses that are actually going to fit. But we're going to have a lot more big houses and not a lot of little houses, and people of medium economic means are going to move.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to put that, I agree, but we have to put that in context, too. Like, we're, if we take this for face value, we're talking about these 58 subject properties, right? I mean, that could, that are, at a minimum of being 15,000 square feet, some are probably bigger, but let's just assume they're all 15,000. So they're able to be split. We're looking at 58 parcels out of, I don't know what the count is, but got to be over 2,000 or something. A small, small percentage of parcels that can be split, that could have nice-looking, well-sighted, larger homes on them, or could be split and have smaller. I think both are valued, you know? And so the ideal policy would be, you could encourage either one. I don't know if you can get that, but the pumping, like...
I agree with you. I think, I think what we have unintentionally, I'm not saying that we've set out to do this, but I think we've unintentionally incented bigger houses. We've done it by our parking rules, because you've got, you have to build the two-car garage for any house, so why not make a bigger house? I mean, assume you're the evil maximizing developer, right?
But we're counting that now, we weren't counting that before.
Yeah, but, but if you have two houses, you count it twice. Right? So there's an incentive to just have one house, because then of your square footage that you're allowed, the non-sellable part is minimized by not, by having fewer houses. So that, that's an incentive to have fewer bigger houses. Also, the way we charge fees is we charge one fee per unit. We don't charge by square footage, we don't charge by bedrooms. It's crazy. And so there's, there's an incentive there to also go big. Also, the process of subdividing means you have to come before us, then you have to go to the city council. It's an arduous process that involves a lot of time and risk. There needs to be some financial incentive for people to do that. So I think, well, I guess what I'm saying is, I agree with, I agree with your goal, but I think we need to understand where we are now, is we're incented towards fewer bigger houses. And I think we need to change that balance a little bit. I think that some of the, the way we calculate square footage incents too much on certain lots.
Well, I mean, to take that, to take that point, I would say we would be better off incentivizing or reallocating some of that square footage. Because I can see that, like, you're going to get pinged twice for two garages if you're able to split a lot, and you're not going to be able to capture that. You're going to get counted for it, but it doesn't, doesn't do you any good. So rather than creating two separate calculation tiers based on whether you're splitting or not, I would rather have some mechanisms that would sort of balance the scale, I guess, a little bit, towards if you were to split your lot and create two dwelling units, how can we make that equitable if you were incented to just do the single house on the larger lot? Like, how, what are some simple mechanisms that we could put in? And I think, I mean, I think the garage, yeah. The reason we did that was...
Get the cars off the street.
Well, that, that's the, that's on the face, but also the square footage was included because we wanted, that's part of the mask, it's part of the, you know...
Also prevents the, oh, my 7,000-foot garage gimmick. Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I sort of, yeah, because as I understand your original thought, it was to sort of, it would, it would have reduced the total amount of square footage of two houses compared to one big one. But it seems like you're suggesting something else now.
No, I, I think, let's, where our current code is, is that if you split, you get a lot more square footage, because we give you more square footage for the smaller part of the lot, because of the curve of our, of our gross floor area. So you get a lot more square footage if you split now. Under what staff is suggesting, you get no more square footage. What I'm saying is, there is a happy medium somewhere in between.
A little more.
I'm not quite sure where that is. I ran a whole bunch of charts. One of the things I figured out is, under the current thing, under our current code, if you split, one of the things I thought is, how many times, so if here's, you've got lots from 15,000 to one acre, if you split, how many times could you build more than the CP, CUP limit? And it came up quite a few times.
Uh-huh.
So to me, that's sort of an, an indication that we're allowing too much.
The CUP limit, if you only built one...
No, if you built, even if you subdivided.
If you subdivided, what you would end up with would be...
Right, so for instance, if, if you have a 19,000 square foot lot and you subdivide, you could build two 3,125-foot houses, which hits the 3,000-foot step. So to me, that's, that's...
And what do you get on the, what do you get on the 19,000?
If you build 19,000, it'd be 4,460.
That's a lot.
So it's more. Under staff suggestion, when you, when you split, none of them come anywhere near CUPs, but you get issues where the average home size would be 1,400 square feet. And you take out 400 for the garage, and people aren't going to do that.
Right.
And so one of the things I started thinking was, well, what do we really want? What, what size are we sort of want, what fits in? And you remember in our old FAR, we had a thing that said, you get to do 2,100 square feet, which is sort of like a 1,700 square foot, three-bedroom house plus a garage? And I really started thinking about, if I were trying to subdivide to make money, I wouldn't build any house smaller than that, because you just wouldn't do it. It's not going to really market so well. Whereas when you start coming up against, for 7,500 square foot, the CUP limit is 2,500, and it goes to three, I think that's really where you want the houses, in 21 to 25. And so I started monkeying with possibilities.
What's it, did you do like a 15, just at 15,000, like?
No, I did, all different lots.
That's the starting point, right?
Yeah.
You picked all the odd numbers?
I just did, 1,000 square foot, each lot, you know? One of the things I thought of is, then I started adding 500 for each lot, so that you could, you know, to basically make up for the garage. But then you have an issue of, if you had a big lot, instead of subdivising into four, if someone subdivided into like two, they could game the system that way and get bigger. So to me, the, the way this worked out the best was, instead of trying to work off the old, is just say, we're just going to have a new FAR rule that's the same tiers, but with just much less. And so it would be 30% FAR up to 11,000, and then 10% after that. And if you run that on lots between the 7,500 and the 15,000, which is the size of the lots you'd get when you subdivided, it produces houses between 2,100 and 2,600 square feet. And that, that seems to me sort of where the target would be.
My only thing is, I just, I don't like creating another, like, basket of tiers of, because you're, because you're splitting a lot...
The rules change.
The rule, the calculation is different. Like, why, I'm sure it's equitable and it works out, like, I have no doubt, but it's just, it just feels kind of like, if you've got a big enough lot and you want to split, we're going to, you know, this can be a different calculation versus if you just had a 7,500 square foot lot, or whatever it is, this is your value. Like, if we're okay with building, if you didn't have a lot split and you had a 7,500 square foot lot and you can build X on it, based on the calculation, it was 2,500 square feet or something, right? And then we carry that over to, when you split the lot, you get, maybe it's X plus some factor or something, you know? Like, why, if we're okay with it here, why can't we be okay with...
Well, it still results in more square footage in every case.
Increasing the density as well, if there's more lots. It's a density increase.
And the other thing is, well, some of the things we talked about before was increasing the minimum lot size, increasing the lot front, the lot frontage requirement. The drawback of those is it makes so many of the existing lots non-conforming. And so, and we talked about this at the last meeting, and there are some things, to me, sort of like, that catches in your, in your gut when you say, okay, half the town is now non-conforming, that used to be conforming before.
Well, that's why I don't want to change the lot, the minimum lot size. I think that's, there are plenty of lots already that are non-conforming, just with...
But I, I think, you know, I tried to run through some of these numbers to get an idea, and I think that, to me, I think, I kept, I kept, I came into two big issues. One is, is it legal for us to do this? I don't want to spend a lot of time with that. And then the other is more the policy issue. Before we try to optimize, let's figure out where we really want to go. And to me, I think there's some happy medium between where our current code is and the concept that we're not going to allow any new square footage by subdividing. There's some medium, but I think we need to do a lot more work to figure out where that is. And that's...
Can you share those numbers with us?
Yeah, I can't, I didn't, I didn't put them...
Is he allowed to just send them to all of us? Is that okay?
No, they're not...
Share it, share it here.
Make it part of the record.
Yeah, share it here, make it part of the record.
Make it part of the record, then we can see it. Because I'd like to see those numbers.
Unfortunately, I didn't really have time to put anything that is record shareable.
Can you send it to staff, and staff can send it to us? Is that okay?
We're going to continue the discussion, we're not making a discussion, so it'll be on, yeah.
I would be happy to get this in a better form for a continued discussion, but what I have now is not really in a form that's understandable to, what?
Does it include 15,000 square feet on there?
It's the first one.
So we're going to continue this part of the discussion?
I think so. I think we also, there's, I don't know if we cleave this off into a different part or not, but we also had the discussion of shared driveways and flag lots, and I think we all agreed to kill flag lots, but we still need, if we're going to do shared lots, which hopefully driveways are, which I think, I think works, but we need better standards. And I think that's another thing we need to chew on more, that, whereas I think all the other stuff, we can, we can move on a lot better.
Well, I think the fire department access, I mean, that clarity helps, like, I mean, that's at a minimum what it needs to be.
Right.
But I think we were talking about enhancing that.
Right.
But I think you're right, the shared driveway is a benefit to both people, each of the two lots. And I'm okay with that. And I think that is a policy and practice that would be, which the citizens would be comfortable with and would be accepted in this town.
It also, it also results in less paved area, the ability to have more...
And less curb cuts, which I think, to the extent you, what we were talking about earlier, I mean, one of the issues is just curb parking is important. Maybe that's not going to be as big an issue in R1 zones, but it is in some places. And I think the other part of that is, there's vehicular access and fire code, but then there's also just the way it's designed so that it's pedestrian-friendly, it doesn't look, like on flag lots, they're often gated and it looks like some, you know, sort of private compound, which isn't very much of a friendly community kind of thing.
I think the only other issue about that is a safety issue around like kids, you know? If you have a driveway where there's other people using it and you've got kids running around playing on the driveway, I, you know, I spend a lot of time playing on the driveway. My kids do, too, you know? And if there's someone else using it who's not that family, there can be a safety issue for kids, if there's a shared driveway. A very, very real thing, you know?
Because you don't know who's using that driveway.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it could be someone else visiting who's not expecting to have kids out there, or you're just, you know, they're not your kids, and so...
Well, I can tell you, I live on a shared driveway, and it's not, it is a little bit like a road, because it's not just your neighbors who use it, it's... bit like a road. Because it's not just your neighbors who use it, it's the UPS guy, the pool people. So, our kids don't play on the shared driveway. It's, it's a pretty simple solution. But I, I think that, but it is.
It's a thought, you know?
Yeah.
Obviously, we're going to move this down the road a little bit, but what's sort of, how, what's the framework of further discussion? Are we trying to just create space to think about it more, or is it sort of?
Well, I think, I think it would be useful tonight to do more of the policy discussion, to get a sense of, if there's a majority of the commission, and we really think that's, represents the majority of the town, who thinks fewer and bigger is better, then it's a really simple solution, and we shouldn't waste time, you know, running more numbers. If, if, if we think, uh, there's more of an appetite for more smaller, or somewhere in between, or, or sort of parity, you know, then we could try to tailor it, but it doesn't.
I mean, I, I definitely don't feel there's a sentiment like, that it's, we should be creating more density in smaller, I think it's, I think it's back to that eclectic nature of, we've got both, you know? And I think, whatever policy direction we try to pursue, it's, it's to preserve the, both possibilities, you know? And to the extent we can make it equitable, that would be great. If, if, I mean, if we're skewed some percentage point towards one or the other, I don't think that's, that's a deal breaker. But I think the goal shouldn't be steering more towards lot splits with smaller homes, because that's better, and that's what the community deserves and wants. I think it's, I think it's both. I think.
Yeah, I don't know how, I mean, again, we're not an elected body. I don't know how we know what the community does or doesn't want. You know, we have a hearing, it's 9:30 at night, nobody's here. So, I mean, you can.
We all talk to people and hear the buzz.
We all hear different things, you know? So, again, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable trying to act as an elected official. I'm not an elected official, I'm an appointed official. But what we do hear is water. And when you, and when you split, uh, should I open the public hearing?
Chairman, I'm going to leave, but just, I'd just like to make one comment. I didn't hear any reference to the general plan. I thought the general plan specifically said to discourage lot sizes, and I thought there was something.
To discourage?
Lot splits, I'm sorry.
Lot splits, yes. Because of water, was the, I think was largely cited.
Pardon me?
Because of water use, I believe it was largely cited.
Well, no, no, I don't think that was the case. I, I don't, but I'm just speaking from memory. But I would just ask that you look there first for some direction before you go off. Because I'm going to tell you that I disagree with some things that were said, and I agree with other things, but as a citizen. So, yeah, it's, it's all over the place. But I think, so the general plan is really important in that way, just to see. I do remember that there was something in there also to discourage flag lots, and I hadn't heard any discussion about that.
I think we eliminated them.
You did, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, they're gone.
All right, well, just keep up the good work. I'm going to bail on you guys.
But on multiple counts, the general plan does discourage lot splits, yes. And I do remember a long discussion about water.
I think that the, the prevailing feeling in town is that people don't want anything to change. They want it just the way it is. That's kind of what, there's a lot of people who feel we don't want change. But there's pressure for change, there's outside pressure for change. And so, um, and so, it's in our purview to think, it's in the purview of someone to think about managing change, to think about how things.
But change might be forced upon us. If we have another earthquake, and now we have a lot of building in town, and that's what happens, you know, what do we want to see, you know, once the dust clears? Do we want more large houses? Or do we want houses that are, you know?
So, we should.
Yeah, I, I also think that, you know, is, I, I think, a lot of the discussion of lot splits is, uh, an existing house is demolished, a reasonably-sized existing house is demolished, a lot is split, two big houses are built, and people say, I don't want that. I, I don't think that.
It's very hard to do with this math.
Right. Well, I don't, I don't think what people are saying is, um, you know, I want a big McMansion there either. I, I, I think there's just, I've seen, I've identified something I don't like, and I want to stop that. And I, I think if we were to take the direction that we want to kill all lot splits, we would be missing, uh, what's the, the intended direction. And I can tell you, as being a member of the general planning committee, we went over and over and over this, and I don't think the intent was to get as big a lots as possible, so we can have as big a house as possible. That, that wasn't it. It was to prevent the thing where a lot split leads to more bigger houses than, from what we already have.
But if the general plan makes somewhat, brings some clarity on that as something that's frowned upon or discouraged, the splitting of lots, regardless of the reasoning for or against, I mean, that's.
Well, I think if.
I'm not saying that's tough to get around, but that's definitely something.
No, I, I think if we, if we look at the, if we, if we look at the language of the general plan, that I, if, if, if I remembered, it says, discourage or consider discouraging lot splits. I think if you take financial incentive out of a lot split by reducing the amount of square footage that can be built, you have definitely discouraged lot splits.
Well, I mean, I think something like what's here.
If it says, consider, consider discouraging, it's kind of a vague.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't remember the exact word.
I could probably read that.
I don't know.
Where would you like to take this?
It says, develop regulations that discourage lot splits, including but not limited to increasing minimum lot sizes. So, those, so.
I remember when we talked about that.
Yeah.
So, developing regulations that discourage, it doesn't say ban. So, you know, I, I think if we took financial incentive out of that, we would definitely be discouraging.
But this, just for argument's sake, what's kind of proposed here in the report, takes, does, does do that.
It does. It very, very, very much so. And, and my concern is, maybe it does it too much. But I, I think that the fact that we say in the general plan, develop regulations, it, it doesn't say ban lot splits.
No.
So.
Yeah.
But it definitely doesn't say, well, it says discourage, it doesn't say encourage it. So, it doesn't create a pathway to, to incentivize.
No, I don't think there's, I don't think there's, either on this body or in the public in general, a desire to convert R1, single-family to some sort of bungalow court multifan, nobody wants to see that. That's not, I don't think where anyone's going.
All right. Well, I mean, I think we might, with that sort of direction, I, I mean, obviously, we're going to move it down the road, but I think it's more of a matter of tweaking that in a way that, just, not discourage, but basically, kind of, doesn't move the ball further down, splitting a lot, because of financial incentive or the size of what you can build, you know, for resale or whatever the case may be. So, I think, we kind of look at how, how we can fine-tune that. That would probably be where we're at, you know, figuring out what, what sort of mechanisms we can put in place that would, if you split a lot, this is what you're going to get. And it's not going to be more, it's going to be the same, or, or less, or, or something, you know?
So, we want to discuss again with a look at.
I would like to sit down with you and look, look at numbers with you. Can we be a subcommittee? Would you be willing to do that? Think about it?
You get to go to lunch at the only place in town.
Yeah. I would, I would just like to kind of, you know, sort of chat about it offline and think about numbers in that way, because.
Well, okay, but put that, put that in a framework, like, if you did that, is it the goal of that to look at sort of what happens with the current scenario, and then what happens if you take something like this? And then what happens if you take something like this, plus incentivizing not counting the garages or something? I don't know. Like, you'd have to, it'd have to be a study of kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a study of.
Really look at the numbers and see what, yeah, and really see what, what it would, what it may as to, yeah.
Because, I mean, that would be useful information. So.
And identify the sweet spot. What, what, what size house are we?
Right.
Well, if we, if we could do it, what size house would we like to see? I'm partial to 2,500.
I think, yeah.
Would you like to form a subcommittee?
I'm, I'm open to that, sure.
I'd do that. Just, I mean, just like, sit down for an hour or two and think about it.
How do we procedurally form a subcommittee?
Um, you can, two people can volunteer and say, I'd like to be on that subcommittee, and come up with some other ways of, of doing this, other than what was suggested in the staff report, and will come back and discuss it the next time with more illustration.
I have one Brown Act question about subcommittees. We obviously can't get more than a majority of the commission on a subcommittee, but can we rope in people who aren't on the commission to help us out?
That, uh, no, because a true subcommittee can only be composed of less than a quorum of the actual body in order to avoid the meeting requirements of the Brown Act.
Very glad I asked.
Oh. But people who aren't on the commission, are they allowed?
They would not be able to be part of your subcommittee, otherwise you've created a Brown Act committee.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, are you two volunteering to?
I'm volunteering to think about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Is anybody else, we can add one more if anybody else wishes to join the subcommittee. Does anybody else wish to do that?
That's a very interesting question.
I'm so committed out.
Nope. All right. So, it's the two of you. All right.
You're doing the guidelines.
I'm fine.
Yes.
I would ask a favor.
Please.
That the rest of the report and the excellent work that the subcommittee did, because part of it is looking to make changes to the hillside development zone, and we're in litigation right now with CETT over some of that, I would request that before we launch into a discussion of that here, if I could review the proposal with litigation counsel Holly Watley, take a look at that, and then maybe come back, and we could talk in closed session first about what impact making such changes may have or may not have on the existing litigation before we start actually talking about it.
Does that mean we get to go home earlier?
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't where I was leading, but.
Sure it is.
It wasn't helpful.
Is it, do we have to do that for all of it, or just the hillside part?
Just the hillside part.
Because the hillside part, all it does is really tie the findings to the hillside.
Well, I understand, yeah.
Can we just skip talking about anything that has to do with hillside and?
Well, you just, we just coupled it, right?
Right.
But we could.
So, I'm, I'm, can we talk about the findings themselves, but not talk about the application?
You could, if we're not talking about applying them to the hillside zone. That's the only issue, is I really would like us to refrain from having a discussion about changing those regulations be, right now. It's just the timing's not quite right, because we're in this litigation.
No, it's just fair enough.
Yeah.
So, we should or should not go through these findings?
Yeah, no, we, we can do it as long as we're making it clear, we're not talking about applying any of this to the hillside zone. If you're okay with that, then we can, then you're not going.
All right. So, should I bring back Commissioner Hinton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinton?
Come on down, wherever you are.
Come on down.
Okay. Uh, we are at quarter to 10. Do we want to embark on this, or do we want to continue this?
I'd like to embark on it. I think we're going to go through.
I'd like to talk about it.
Want to embark?
I think they did a lot of really good work.
It's pretty well done, so it may not, it may not tie us up for a lot.
Very good. And we have a consensus to move forward.
We'll let you be the judge of it.
I'd like to start off by saying you guys did a great job. I mean, did a really good job.
Well, we had a good head of our subcommittee.
The chair made it happen.
He kept us on task.
Okay. So, should we dig in here to the red lines? Okay. So, starting with exhibit A1?
Or A2.
I'm sorry, today, no, A1 red line, right?
A1.
A1.
Well, A1 is the clean, and A2 is the red line.
Sorry, A2 is the red.
If you want to look at the main CUP findings, I think the red line's helpful, because there wasn't a whole bunch of changes.
Yeah.
So, it's the second.
Okay. So, 1760, 040?
Yeah.
So, these are our main findings.
And these, these apply commercial, you know, so, we don't want to get into too much detail of, in these findings. But the, the things we changed, we added location in A, we found that in a couple other findings, I think, St. Gabriel. In C, we added the concept of public health, safety, and general welfare, which was in almost everybody else's finding, except ours. E, we, we sort of broadened beyond just the general plan to include any applicable design guidelines, so that, once Manish and his subcommittee draft those, we can apply those. And F, we reverted, because it, it just didn't make sense to us that, convenience necessitates. And so, hopefully, this wording works a little more. And we, we talked a lot about the difference between D and F, and why you needed both. And D is sort of more a general demand issue, and F is really the location. And so, one of the things that we thought about is, like a liquor store, there, there might be a great deal of demand.
Which might have been useful tonight if we had this on the record.
Why do you think that?
Because it's not on the record, and I didn't think it was fair to apply it.
But, you know, if, if you wanted to put a liquor store in between the bottle shop and Howie's, or bottle shop and Happy's, that maybe's not the best place. Whereas, if, you know, Mary's wanted a liquor license, I don't even know if they have one, maybe that's fine there. So, that's really more with, with the F.
Location, it's all about location.
Right.
I thought these were really good. I only had one comment on a word, which is in F, the, the use of the word utility. Because to me, it makes me think of like, a utility, you know, like, like, the gas company.
More in terms of usefulness.
Usfulness, yeah. And it, I mean, it sort of says, public interest, convenience, and utility. And it just, it has two meanings. And I would be happy if we could just change that word to something that means usefulness, or something.
Usfulness is a fine word.
I, I would be happy to do that if you have that word, because we struggled over that word. Because the problem is, before, it's public interest, convenience, and necessity. And really, public interest and convenience are a continuum, and necessity is a binary concept. And that's one of the reasons why this finding didn't work, because you have sort of, you, you want to get, you know, more of this, but then this one is really yes or no. And so, the utility was, word was an attempt to find a word that is more of a spectrum that replaces necessity. But if you have a better word, by all means.
Value?
Yeah. Value implies money, though.
Oh, wasn't using it in that context?
I know, but it has that.
Okay, sorry. Usfulness is good. I like usefulness.
Usfulness.
Does there have to be a third?
It doesn't.
You know, would benefit the public interest and convenience.
Done.
That, that works too.
Yeah. I'd be a little happier with that. I just think it's good to avoid confusion.
Yeah, no, I agree.
If I'm confused, someone else is going to be confused somewhere along the, yeah.
All right, let's just strike it.
Interest and convenience.
Uh, if you want the concept of utility, you could use say utilization.
How about use?
Which doesn't refer to a utility.
Well, use, use also gets to the question of, the public has a right to use it.
I mean, utility in this context means utilization. That's what it means in this context. So, if you could, you could strike it.
Utilization.
Utilization is what utility is saying there, if you want it.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
I like that, too.
Very good.
So, was it utilization? So.
Does that make sense?
Well, because it's public utilization. I'm not quite sure I understand what that means.
It means utility.
I'm not clear as to what that means, though, when I'm trying to apply this. What does public utilization mean?
Do we mean public interest, public convenience, and public utility? Is that what this sentence is read to me?
No, it's public interest.
Public interest, convenience, and?
Yes, it's public applies to all of them.
Public applies to all of them.
I, I'm fine with getting rid of it altogether.
Public interest is fine. Public interest is very broad.
I'm fine with usefulness. I, I think those are all fine suggestions. I don't, I don't think there's a lot of importance there.
Are you fine with striking it, or?
Yeah, I, don't you? I, I.
Interest and convenience. I think that's fine.
We could just leave it at that.
Yeah, benefit the public interest and convenience. I don't think it's like missing something still.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Interest is very broad.
So is convenience.
Convenience, you're fine.
It's like.
In fact, you could strike convenience, and just say, benefit the public interest. The problem is, the, a lot of times, you like to have these run on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm all in favor of shorten, you know, cut to the chase.
I say just knock, knock off utility and call it good.
Are we in consensus, public interest and convenience?
Yes.
We are in consensus. We are in consensus, we are moving on. Thank you. So we're moving on to B2?
Yeah.
Yeah, in this case, it, it really might be easier to just look at the claim, because we move stuff around and, um.
Yeah, I think it's almost a standalone.
And I, I won't talk about the cross-reference changes in the first paragraph, but we did cross-reference to Canyon, I can say that, right?
Yes.
And we'll pretend that something's built, doesn't exist. So.
Do we need to read this, or is it a public document? Does it need to be read for the record, or is it okay as a public document?
No, you're just, it's, you, it doesn't need to be read for the record, because it's not really in an ordinance format yet.
Okay.
Or just, it's a discussion.
Got it.
So the, the revisions to A take into the concept of citing and landforms. There was a, there was a portion in here that talked about consistent style that we had talked about deleting previously. We moved that concept down to the new finding D that, that deals with.
Coherent within, within the structure, as opposed to within the environment.
Right.
Context.
Consistent, sorry.
Yeah, B, we, we split into two, so the first part of B base is, exactly stays the same. And then the second part of B becomes the new C, and we fleshed this out to give some importance to the concept of use and privacy.
Open space.
And open space, and also to provide some sort of standards, because if you, if you just have something that says adverse impact, well, everything has an adverse impact to some degree. So we, we tried to give some sort of judge, and that's where we came up with unreasonable.
B is basically about scale now, right?
Yes, B, B is, yeah, same language and about scale.
And C is about other impacts.
Right, and C is the, is the way where you really get into unreasonably interfere the view, privacy. Uh, and, and we also thought about noise, e- even in, um, in, in R1, because, you know, you can, you can have situations where people have a workshop or something, if they put it right on the property line.
Or pool.
Or a pool. Or, or if they have a rooftop deck that's right over their neighbor, it might not block their view, but, you know, that, that might be an issue. So that's why that, and then we retained the catch-all of the material adverse effect, but put the modifier material.
I also like unreasonably interferes with public views, because views are a really tricky, we had a discussion about this some years ago, I think when we were both still in the, all of us were. And it's really tricky, so I like this.
It's the downtown ordinance, looking at the amount, seeing the amount.
Yeah, and I think unreasonably interfere is, is sensible, because there's views in every direction, and everybody has an opinion on it, and you don't want to go crazy about it.
We also thought about the, the public views, because we, we've often talked about neighbor views, but the public view is important as well. And you, you can imagine a situation where you have a big house lording over the street where you couldn't see them.
If I may, um, where you included material adverse impacts, what, what would be some examples of that? What you would call material adverse impacts? I'm not clear on what that would measure.
Well, it, material adverse impacts, I, I think that material adverse impacts is the sort of catch-all that we've listed the, the biggest culprits already. So view, privacy, and noise are the big ones, but there might be others that we, you know, don't come up that often, that who knows what they're, maybe it's odor, I mean, that's not usually a, a big issue in, in, in R1, but, you know, and, and maybe there's stuff we don't, I don't know, that's, you, you want the catch-all for that. D, we tried to get into the, um, the concept of having a project that, that works together and doesn't look haphazard, and we tried to go with the concept of coherence and compat- inter-site compatibility, as opposed to consistency, which we thought was too tough. E actually requires consistency, but this is the instance where the code allows something that, that's over the, the normal standard because of that architectural style. And so there's the, the height in 1720 020 is, is the one that I think of the most, and there might be a couple others. It's not, it's not a very common instance. So, but we did, we, one of the things is, we, we went back and forth on this a lot, and we really wanted to see if, if people thought we were, sort of got the balance right on D and E, because we wanted to make sure that even though we're not going to consistency in D, that somebody doesn't put, you know, the sort of fake brick facade on the, on the front, and then it's, you know, just stucco on all the other. And we read and wrote D to mean that, and we want to make sure that's.
How it reads.
What you guys think it means, and if not, whether we need to augment it more.
Well, I think it, it, I think it captures that, and it also allows some judgment on, because I don't, I, I agree, things don't have to be the same to go together.
Right.
And they can be fairly contrasting, and you can still look at it and say, wow, those complement each other, so makes sense. It's like, you don't want it to be too, too bland, and a little difference can be tasty, so.
Did we later, there, there's a clarifier for compatibility, right?
Right.
Which is also, I mean, that's going to apply here, so.
Right, right, that was, um, we borrowed almost wholesale from West Hollywood.
Yeah, that, that clarifier paragraph, so that would come into play. You know, if you're trying to figure out what, what do, what do you mean by compatible? What does that mean? Or what do we mean by that?
And then we, we thought about, it, it, basically, these are revisions of the existing findings we had, although we, we split a couple of them. And, and there was this discussion at the planning commission level of, of additional findings, and we thought about how to apply those, and we really thought that going, requiring more is really, makes sense on just the, the ones that are the bigger size, and not the, the, the ones that are tripped for other reasons, especially like, you know, the, the proverbial small second-story addition. And so we, we saw that in the, the E, that it, it says, okay, well, this finding really applies if you're adding more height. We said, well, let's try to get more, um, for people who are doing more, the more square footage. And so this one, the F, and, and the subparts of F are only triggered for those that exceed the size, not for ones that just are there because of this, the second floor. And the, the main finding here is that it's a superior project that would enhance the neighborhood and exhibit exceptional design through a combination, and, and it says, lists factors that could go into it.
If I, if I may, I, I do have a little bit of a concern with this, in that, say for example, somebody has a very plain stucco house that they want to add on to, and it triggers the CUP. Here, we're talking about, we're going to require a superior project. And one of the, and I know it says if not all, most if not all innovative, thoughtful, and noteworthy architecture. If you're just continuing, or maybe it's a cottage that you want to maintain the architectural style, it's not going to be necessarily su- superior in a sense of innovative, thoughtful, or noteworthy, maybe thoughtful perhaps, but, um, I'm just a little concerned that it, it, it requires it to be brought to another level, where all you're doing is trying to continue something that is plain, you don't want anything more than that, but it does trigger the CUP. How, how would that work with respect to this type of project?
I think it's simple, make your addition smaller. I, I mean, that's exactly what we meant. I mean, that's why that we have finding D that talks about coherence and compatibility, so that if you're doing, if you're not exceeding the square footage and you're doing a small addition, you know, we're not going to make you go back and fix the whole part of the house. But if you're going to add an addition that's so much that bumps you over the limit, and you've got an ugly house, I, I'm not going to approve that. And that's, this is, this is exactly saying that.
And I also think that, that this is, I, 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 I thought a lot about this issue of a combination of most, if not all, of this list. So what does most mean? I guess there's six, there's six on this list, so most has to mean at least four, right? It has to be a majority.
A corn.
Which means you could skip number one, which is innovative, thoughtful, and just do high-quality architectural details and building materials compatible with the overall project design, which is a rather exceedingly lower.
Bar.
Bar to jump over.
Well, I, I think part of our discussion was, to back up, part of our, is, we had a little bit of a discourse about what constitutes an innovative, thoughtful, or noteworthy architecture, because it's a very broad statement, right?
Very subjective.
Right? But I think we were, we came to some tenants on that, which are kind of, that type of architecture, regardless of stylistically, whether it's exceptional or noteworthy, that it, it constitutes kind of like the essence of two through six. You know, like, so if you just did two through six, but you wanted to avoid one, it almost as if you're doing one by, by.
But you could do, you could do three through six. That's a maj- that's, that's most.
Well, I, I think that.
And I think it's, I, I think it's, I think it's okay, actually.
I, I think the key is, though, you, you have to make the main finding, that it's a superior project that would enhance the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, maybe the most is not the right, maybe some is a better word.
How do you make a finding?
I think most is good.
Well, I think, I think that's, the point of one through six is to give guidance of, of what that finding means.
What does superior mean?
Well, superior means you have most, if not all, of these subfindings.
What, what came out of this is that we've voted on some large projects, and we've, we haven't had a chance to weigh in on their appearance, because the findings of the CUP wouldn't allow us to do that. And, you know, like I commented, that there were some things that I wish I could go back and take back, or at least have the authority to say, yeah, you can build it, but it can't be like that, because it's, the way you've designed it is ugly. And it's going to, and we're going to, and ugly is going to last a long time, so I think it gives us, without having to formalize a design review committee, it gives us the authority to say, you know, what you've presented to us, I, we understand the need for that, but what, the, the, the project that you've presented us is, is not acceptable, you need to make it better.
And I think.
And then go back and start that back and forth.
Yeah, because, let's face it, this stuff is very subjective, right? I mean, you can't define, you can't come with a hard and fast definition of a lot of what we're talking about here, but.
Yeah, no, you're, it's, it's broad, but I mean, at some base level, at some base level, when you look at a project, I mean, okay, there's subjectivity, right? But, I mean, we've all been in a position where we've looked at a packet, and you look at the project, and you go, what, this, it's not there, you know, I don't, you know, maybe it's not ugly, but it's, it's just not, like, it's out of scale, or it's, it's doing the lowest common denominator of, you know, architectural style, and it's sort of, you know.
You can see where they cut corners.
And superior may be a strong word, but I mean, essentially, when I read that, to me, it means if it enhances its neighborhood and exhibits exceptional design through some of these qualifiers here, then that's a superior project. That's what we mean by that. You can use a, a different word, but when we say superior, that's what we mean by that, that it's, it's striving to, to hit these two points, that it enhances its neighborhood, its context, and it also incorporates most, if not all, of these sub items.
And I think, I mean, I, I sort of spent some time thinking, okay, if you pick four, you know, that's most, four is the most, doesn't work with any four. You know, because you could pick two, three, five, and six, or whatever, you know?
Well, two, like, drops out if it's not even, it might not even be applicable, right? Like, if you don't have a, a structure to preserve.
So you could pick three, four, five, and six, is that, you know, is that enough? So, so I just kind of think it pays to sort of, because we know developers will squeeze, squeeze the text to get what they want, you know? So, um.
Well.
And I kind of think, yeah.
Are you saying, like, one is just, kind of, is just so out there as far as being esoteric or, or too big, that you wouldn't even try to apply for that?
Well, I think, I think a lot of people would say, we don't want to bother with being, you know, having noteworthy architecture, what can we do to not quite have noteworthy architecture? Let's pick the other ones to, to, uh, to do. And, and do these other ones amount to enough to make it really good?
Well, but that's kind of what, I, I mean, some of my thought process there was, one's, one's not, one's important, but if you, by default, try to skirt one, because you don't understand it, or you don't, you don't want to strive for that, if you did two through six, there are parts of those that constitute, that would.
That would add up.
By an essence constitute a noteworthy, or thoughtful, or innovative piece of architecture. Like, you know, if, if you designed a home that was completely tech-driven and conserved every bit of water and energy and everything else, like, that's really applying to six, but it could be, you know, that could also constitute a very innovative project, you know, so like, I don't, I don't know, maybe you're.
Why shouldn't it say through a combination of the following?
Well, yeah, we, we.
But I think, I think, I just, you know, I just wanted to sort of bring up that idea, that, you know, is, 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 is most enough, and I, I, I think it probably is, you know, but.
Well, do you think, do you think most is too much? Do you think we should say some combination?
No, I don't think most is too much.
Okay.
I think most, most is actually good, but I just wanted to kind of think aloud a little more about this issue.
I think two is objective, I think three is objective, I think four is objective, I think five is bordering on objective, but moving towards subjective, I think six is objective. I think one is hugely, hugely subjective, and I think the word superior is, superior means better than all the others. That's what superior means. So what are, it's a superior project in comparison to what?
To the normal projects we get.
But what, what's your, what's your, what's your burden of comparison? What's, where's your objectivity?
I, I don't think this is subjective. I, it's, it's, no, it's, it's.
You've got a combination here of subjective and objective, so if you want to be fair to the applicant, you know, I would say you've done a good job in two, three, four, and six.
I would disagree, I think five is completely objective.
I think it's close.
We're talking about actual materials and detailing.
Well, I, I think if.
I don't know what high-quality architectural, again, I think there's, that, that, that as an architect, you may have an opinion about that, but I may have an opinion that's different than yours.
Well, I mean, we've seen some stuff that you could look at and say, okay, give me a break, that's just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't.
I, I'm okay with it, but I'm saying.
Day going down the boulevard.
There, there, there needs to be, there needs to be subjectivity in the review. I, I think that one of the problems that we've had, and, and when I say we, I mean the whole city, I, I don't mean this commission, or the staff, or, or anybody, the whole city has had this mentality of checking the box. We line up the objective criteria, we check the box, it's good to go, and it's ugly. And it, and you can just look at it and use whatever kind of proper architectural terms you want, but everyone's gut reaction is, this thing just doesn't belong there, it doesn't fit, it doesn't work. And if you're going to real, build a really big house, we need to have that subjective review. A lot of cities do this through design review, and they have a manual that's this thick. Someday, Manish will develop that for us. We don't have it now, and this is what, what we're trying to do to get us there.
I'm done in July.
What do, what do you think about it?
Better get started.
Not that language.
No, I like it, but I think it should say a combination of the following.
A combination.
Of all of them, and, yeah, it's subjective, but.
Matt, Matt, my question is.
Does that bother you? Like, like, sub point one? I mean, I think we can all agree it's subjective, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue that that, that's not, but.
But it gets the applicant thinking that they need to come up with something good.
And that's, that's the whole point. What, what, what we want is that when you stand at the other side of the counter and you read this, it's like, you know what, I, I need to bring a better product to market. And we can't just let the, we just, like, can't let the homeowner who, you know, I've only got a budget of, you know, 20 bucks, and you're going to make it, you know, look like the Taj Mahal, that ain't going to fly.
Why wouldn't you want all of those findings?
Because you can't have it all.
I think that's a bridge too far.
Okay.
Well, especially, especially number two, if you've got, if you've got a, if you've got a historical building.
Yes.
Then you don't necessarily want innovative. Those two sort of have a conflict with each other.
Where applicable.
Yeah. But I think, you know, I think that, that, in particular, those two could really have a conflict. You might, you wouldn't necessarily need to do both of them.
Well, it doesn't have to be innovative, though, there's, there's the or in there. I mean, it could be thoughtful architecture that is responsive to the specific site. I mean-
I mean, if you're doing adaptive reuse, it's like, it's about what's already there.
But this allows us to ask them to defend it on these, on these positions. So, that's where we're gonna have the discussion, like, well, tell me how it is, how do you see this as being? And that's, you know, we may not get what we want, but at least we can begin to have the discussion, which will move the agenda in the direction we want it to go.
Thoughtful architecture that is responsive to the specific site is something that makes sense. That's, that's much closer to objective than standard generic cookie cutter. Those are descriptor words. If you say, the burden is, show me that it's thoughtful architecture is responsive to a specific site, that's something that you can make a case for. I could make a case for that. I could understand what that meant. The other words cloud it for me. What's standard, what's generic, what's cookie cutter? That's, you know, that's a point of view.
We've seen that.
We've seen it. There are, there are books-
Everybody sees it.
Books of designs where they took out, you know,
We've seen buildings, we have seen buildings-
Victorian home cookie cutter?
We've seen buildings where only the names have been changed.
Victorian home cookie cutter? If you go up and down, uh, New England, you're gonna see nothing but, but Victorian homes.
Think of cookie cutter as a, a, a typical house in a big development, in a housing-
But I'm saying, there's just lots of room in the words.
Cookie cutter is, I mean, in essence, where the plan or the design of the home is irrelevant to its site, so-
I like those, I-
You can pop that, that rectangle down here, you can pop it down here, you could pop it down-
I understand, and I think when you say words like thoughtful architecture that's responsive to the specific site, you make a point.
But I think the rest of it brings it, I don't know, more into layman-
Anyway, I'm, I'm not, it's not a-
To me, it's more layman to me.
It's not a-
When I read that, it makes sense, like, oh, what they mean is, don't give us a cookie cutter plan on, that totally takes the site out of, out of its-
I'm not gonna, I'm just telling you what, what the words say to me.
Yeah, no, actually, the, we added the, the latter part on. I mean, that was a, that was an innovation that we did as part of the building, and, and part of the reason was that, thoughtful architecture that is responsive to the specific site was not thought to be enough guidance.
Well, you have five more points that follow.
No, I, I know, but in this, in this one, because it, um, we, we've had projects in the past where things, people, applicants were told that you need to make it fit onto the site and work, and they said, huh? I don't, I don't understand what you mean. And so, the, the concept of providing the opposite was there to give, was to give more guidance. And that, that's the purpose. You know, and, and the other part is, if there's any of those words that you don't like, that you think there's better, but that was, that was the purpose of that.
And we've seen plans that were generic, so the only thing that changed on the house was the fascia, and the floor plan and everything from spot to spot, you know, was the same.
Well, no, it was flipped.
Well, that's, one of them was flipped.
That's Plan Two R, because it's reverse.
That would be replicative.
So, you know, it's like, you know-
Well, that's what cookie cutter essentially is.
Yeah.
Replication of the same thing.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, those words kind of speak to me.
I mean, if you like re-
I was gonna say, I think it makes sense because it gives the applicant an idea of what you don't want, rather than just saying the first part, it's kind of like, oh, what does that mean?
I'm not gonna make, it's like, it's not a hill to die in for me, I'm just telling you what it says to me.
Yeah.
Or you could have started with that.
Um, if I may ask another question on number one, if you were to meet this standard, you do have to meet innovative and thoughtful, but because i- it's innovative, thoughtful, and/or, so the only one that's and/or is noteworthy. You do have to meet both innovative and thoughtful, then. And then you have the option-
I think it's and/or applies to all three of them.
Yeah.
It does, okay.
In that-
Oh, that's the way I, I intended it. I, that you could do all three, you could do two, you could do any one.
Innovative and thoughtful, or noteworthy, or noteworthy, which would mean-
And/or, noteworthy, okay, so it is-
Thematicly, it's, makes sense.
And, yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah, but once again, it puts the applicant on the, on, to, it pushes the applicant to say, why is this, you know, explain to us why it is innovative, what was the, what about it was thoughtful, or how is it noteworthy?
It's, it's or, or, should be.
Okay, because it's innovative, or thoughtful, or noteworthy, or all of it, or, so it's whatever combination.
Right.
Okay.
I think what it's gonna be is, one word or the other's gonna apply, given the type of proj, project. So, for the example, like, you were saying the cottage style, you know, they're doing a, a, busting through the area to, to add on, or whatever, such a large addition, but they want to knit the pieces together, you know, that, that, I wouldn't necessarily say that would be noteworthy or innovative, but it might be thoughtful, you know, in how that approaches, versus a house that's super tech-driven and sustainable and this and that, or the materiality, it could be innovative, you know, so, I think it's gonna be interchangeable.
Okay.
Okay. I think we've beat one to death. Two is pretty straightforward. Three is a similar concept, but is, is a broader one that deals with the landforms and the landscaping. Four goes into siding, which again, is a, is a big issue that we've had. And, and really talks here, we use, we say maximize instead of unreasonably interfere, which is a, a higher standard than the sort of normal finding. Five, high-quality architectural details and building materials, but that are also compatible with the overall design, not just, you know, I bought this really cool doodad that I'm gluing on. And then six, and this is right from the general plan update, sustainable building and landscaping practices, especially water-saving. And then we have the discussion of what compatibility means, which is, again, we, we really like this, um, from West Hollywood. And I think the only word we changed is we changed the applicant's response instead of the designer's response.
Yeah, I remember reading this in that West Hollywood information back when, and I thought it was a really good description.
And then the next section, we, we discussed trying to say how these play in to the objective criteria and give examples of sections where, in order to meet these, you might need to have less development intensity than you would otherwise be allowed. And I think that one of the, what, what this is meant to address is the problem we've had where people are maximizing height, square footage, setback, whatever it is, and they say, well, I've done everything I can to try to do these other things, but I'm refusing to shrink, move back, whatever. And we want to have the capability to say, look, you're just not gonna get it if you're maximizing your square footage. You need to chop that down some. Or if you're uphill from somebody and you've got the two-story massing, you gotta move that massing somewhere else. And that's, and, and that was to sort of flesh it out and, and give
Actual illustration.
Those examples so that, you know, we could point to that and give people a direction and guidance.
So I'm wondering, Terry, is this like, good language to do that? Or is that workable?
I, I really like it.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I like it too. I just want to make sure that it's kind of defensible and
I think it's defensible, I think it, it will really help. It, it's not design review, but it's helping you get there. Yes, it is.
So it gives us kind of a little more strength in pushing those kinds of things.
Flexible, it gives you more details. I think it'll actually be, um, a better, you know, give more guidance to the applicant to-
Give us a little more muscle.
Help a design that can be approved.
I like having those examples, it's like-
And then the last provision, we, we struggled with the, the whole concept of the type of submittals that we get, and we, we talked about requiring certain ones, and then we thought, well, let's not require anything. Let's just say it's the applicant's burden to demonstrate this, and, you know, these things might be really cool.
I, I, when I read that section, I was just wondering if, if the commission or the staff can require them. I mean, is there a mechanism where we can say, we need these things?
You're talking about the three-dimensional perspective?
Uh, as a standard two-dimensional, yeah.
And story pulls.
Yeah, you can. You, you, you could make it required for every application, but this way there's flexibility.
But this says they, they may provide it, but can we require them to provide it, I guess is my question, in certain cases?
Yeah, I think, I think yes. If, if an application comes to you and you don't, and you've done this before, and you don't feel that you have enough information, you can direct the applicant to bring back a three-dimensional view, or, and, and I think, I think, yeah, you can.
Yeah, and that, that is expensive for the applicant, getting the 3D rendering, that's thousands of dollars. But, you know, front elevations, or building elevations are, are cheap, easy to draw.
And, and, you know, this gets into the whole proverbial small addition.
Yeah.
You, you know, you don't, you're not gonna require all that for that. Hopefully, it's not that big of a deal. But for the big house where, you, you know, it's on a, on level ground and blah, 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 that's the concept.
Yeah.
But is it a concern, like, the way it's currently worded, it's, we might or might not get those things?
Yeah, I mean, it sort of says they may-
Recommended.
They may give it to us if they want, but I just want to make sure that reserves for us the ability to require it.
In, in the meeting, do we then say something like, I don't see that you've met your burden to demonstrate blah, blah, da blah, and I want something, say, you, you should just show me this, perhaps get me a 3D thing, otherwise I'm gonna vote you down? Is that how we say it?
Well, um, I mean, that's basically it. If someone, if an application comes before you and you don't feel that you have enough information to see how it's sited, how it's going to look, how it's gonna impact the neighbors, then that's, that's the direction you would provide. And I've yet to see an applicant that is not going to come back and try to meet that desire for additional information that will help them get their application approved.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't limit us from doing that.
It, I don't believe that it does. It, it provides flexibility.
But, but you look at what we, we, we approved a, a, a project on Rancho, and the applicant anticipated many of our questions, and came back with a lot of statistics, a lot of drawings, a lot of, you know, and I saved them because it was an example of, you know, what are the kinds of questions we're gonna ask, and, you know, here are the answers to them. And I believe if somebody, you know, looks down this and says, well, I really want to get this project done, then I better have convincing evidence, or convincing, convincing argument, that, you know, that I'm right. And, you know, I'd rather pay, I'd rather pay the extra money to get this done now, as opposed to come back and, you know, you know, come back in two weeks and, and try it again. I think by putting it, the onus on them, we can see how serious they are in terms of, you know, convincing us that this project is actually the right one.
I, I think the flip side is, we, I realize it was certificate of appropriate, it's not a CUP, but we approved those, those air conditioning things with a hand-drawn thing from the applicant, and, and that was fine for that project. And I wouldn't want them to spend $4,000 on, you know, Photoshop, remodel, whatever.
All they needed was another camellia bush in front of it.
Right.
Whatever those were, out front.
But that discretion is still in our court, like, if, on review of it, if it, if we all see the same thing and it makes sense, then there's no need for additional
Yeah.
Material, but I think we want to have the door open to require that, you know?
Yeah.
Or ask for it.
Okay, we, we can't talk about the hillside zone, but we, we can talk about tying it into the canyon zone?
Yes.
So, the, the canyon zone provides a similar structure to the R1 zone, in that it says, you know, you can build a single-family house, and you can do these things with a CUP. And one of them is when you go over the limit, and, and the canyon is 3,000. The second story in the canyon is, um, second, non-conforming second story, wait a minute, it is, second story that violates the setbacks but conforms to existing line. Remember, we used to have that R1? So that's a CUP in the canyon. They don't have the concept of all second stories go to, go to CUP. So, um, we, we thought, because the canyon zone was recently updated, and because we were really taxed with the findings on these and not redoing the canyon zone, we'd punt on that. But I, but we did want to bring it up to say that that's a sort of different standard than the R1, and we just want to make sure we're okay with that, and either leave it, modify it, or put it on the to-do list to modify later, or whatever people think about that. Yeah, I should say that the, um, they, they added the angle plane to the canyon. So, that probably a lot of second stories are gonna invade. So, you're probably gonna catch a lot of second stories in CUPs
Right.
in, in the canyon, because of the-
Because of the angle plane.
Because of the angle plane.
Lots are so narrow.
And so, if somebody can manage to wedge that in, I don't know, maybe we don't need to review.
How did we not have the angle plane in that, in the house we just looked at?
R3?
Well, you somewhat, you somewhat effectively do, because the second story does need to provide a, a further setback. So it is kind of built into it. In general, it is built in. But there is no specific angle plane requirement, but the second story has to be set back 15 feet, whereas the first story is 10 feet.
Right.
So you effectively do have that effect.
Yeah, sorta. But that, I mean, that, that setback language on the R3 is just really bad. I mean, that's yet another one of our to-do, to-do list items. So are we, we're comfortable leaving the canyon the way it is, then? Or do we want to stew on that, or?
Stew. You know, it seems to have additional protections already to some, but-
What, what was the tie-in? What we're trying to tie in?
Well, it's just that, the-
Ross.
Yeah, I mean, the trigger in R1 for the CUP is size and second floor. And in canyon, it's size, although it's a lower size, it's 3,000 instead of 3,500. But then, the, the second story is only if they invade the setback, which we can't even do in R1 now, because we got rid of that provision.
I think I would like to see them apply, actually, to second stories.
But we just said we're probably gonna catch, catch a bunch anyway with the angle plane, right?
I don't know, have we had a lot of canyon projects under the new zone?
Well, not necessarily. If, if you can stay away from the angle plane, in some instances, you can still provide a second story, which currently you would not be required to get approval of a CUP in the canyon. So it is possible that those could still slip through without needing a CUP, if it's a little, a little wider lot in the canyon zone.
Well, the lot, and the lots are odd sizes, so if they, if they move it enough to the, they can get that second story in without having to worry about the angle plane. Whereas down here in the flats, the lots tend to be more rectangular and uniform.
So you would comply with the angle plane while still not needing to get a CUP for a second story. So.
I don't feel comfortable kind of just saying.
Well, I think.
Kind of looking at it a little, in a little more.
Right, I think one of the things, the way, the way it works, because the CUP triggers are fully in the canyon zone as opposed to some other one we can't talk about, the, we could move these findings along and adopt them, and then we could deal with the CUP triggers, come back to the canyon, see if we want to do that. Because I, to me, I, I don't really know the canyon zone well enough to know if, if that makes sense or not.
I mean, I don't think we can actually act on the canyon zone because it hasn't been noticed. Am I right about that?
Well, this is just discussion.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I think we need to, if we want to do anything about it, we kind of have to.
I mean, I don't think there's anything.
I don't think it's terribly urgent. I don't think it's super urgent, but I kind of like.
I mean, getting this to apply to R1 would be.
Huge.
Huge. Moving that along and then seeing if we can, if there's a correlation to changing the CUP triggers for canyon. I mean, I don't frankly know if there's, it's that big of an issue or not.
Well, have we had a lot of canyon projects, or?
Have any grasp?
Not as many as R1. We do have one currently that has been submitted and we are reviewing the application. It does have some second-story components in the canyon. But he's not, it's not triggering a CUP.
Right.
Triggering other discretionary approvals, but not a CUP.
The, the general plan update talked about noticing neighbors for second stories. Was that, I, I forget if that was for all residential or was that only for R1?
For, for residential, I believe it was in the, if I remember correctly, it may have been in the, I think it was R1. I do think it was R1. And the way that was addressed was through the CUP for the second story. Because that was specific to a second-story project. So, and I, I do believe it was for R1 only.
Yeah, I would like to see that come back or, or us take that up as a separate zone, sort of.
I, I would like to hear back from staff as about this proposal and how it would work from your side of the counter and if there are things that would make it more expedient or easier to explain. Because, you know, you're where the rubber meets the road with these applicants. And, you know, we could craft something that is very esoteric and makes it, you know, very difficult to get what we want. And I want to make sure that, that, that this reads and gives enough guidance both to staff, but also so that the applicants aren't walking away being confused. Because, because one of the things that we looked at was we liked the language in, in, in a lot of the other, in some of the other cities because it gave both clear direction and examples and, you know, we tried to be, you know, you know, as forthright as we, to get what we want.
Right. And that's why I was asking the questions that I was asking about that criteria is because, that's exactly right. I'm the one who's going to have, we're planning, we'll have to interpret that or, or give direction to the applicants. And, and so I, you know, I was just thinking of scenarios that perhaps don't fit. But I think that if it's in particular that first one, if it's one or the other, I think that, that would work. If it's all of them, I think it would be very, very, very limiting, very difficult. But.
I mean, I think something you're, I mean, I think we intentionally set the table this way with this is what I think will play out as, as time goes on is there are specific examples and things, and we're asking for more concrete sort of evidence of trying to design something that's intentional and that fits and does all these things. That, the next question's going to be, well, you're, you're being very specific, so what, like, basically, show, show me what. Right, what do you mean by that? What do you mean by that? So that's like, that's that design guideline manual. There, I mean, I'm not saying they'll specifically that stuff, but it's going to move towards saying, since you're, you have a point of view of what you're looking for, what is that? Like, you know, and so, which, we don't have that por- portion of it yet. I think this is setting that table and I think you're going to, that, that's going to be the battle probably at the counters, you know, architects and folks coming, applicants coming up saying, "Well, okay."
Who says?
What, what?
What?
What, what does that look like?
Say what?
No, exactly.
From the city's perspective, what, what does that look like?
And that's.
We don't have that yet, but I think we're, if, if this is something we adopt and codify, I think the next challenge is sort of.
Testing it.
Do, do we develop that, you know, and that's going to take some time, but I think, do we pursue that? Because, I mean, we, just in our discussions, we, we found examples of.
There were some good examples.
There was some good, there's some good stuff out there. I think it would have to be tailored to sort of.
I mean, the only, the only thing I can see, I, I can't see the other side, you know. For example, somebody thinks that somebody is very, something is very innovative, and it can be actually very ugly. I end up with something, you could end up with a contrast that is innovative and you can't, you can't argue that it's not innovative, but it is. And, and we do have examples in town, I don't want to name any, but we do have something that is innovative, but I think you really, you know, it may not be, and I remember the commission not being very keen on it, but. So anyway, it is, I mean, but I, I think it provides a little, it does provide more direction in, in the direction that I think the commission wants to go. I think that more times you will end up with the thoughtful than, than the innovative or noteworthy. But, but that's fine. I mean, that, that has, obviously has a lot of value. I, I do agree that the generic or cookie cutter, although I, I know what that means, it is a little bit hard to. It's a little bit hard to put, put your finger on it, although it's one of those things, like when you, you see it, when, when you see it, you know what it is.
Well, I mean, what we're talking about is tract home, right?
Right, which doesn't, yes, that, that would be.
That's what we're talking about, right?
That is one that happens. That, that is when you can see, but if it's one individual, which is most of the city, if you're just.
But I mean, like a tract home building is what we're looking at, right?
I also think of faux styles as, you know, faux Mediterranean or faux whatever, maybe faux craftsmen. That is also something that maybe cookie cutter would, that might fall on, or generic actually might, or, or a tutor, faux tutor. You know, all of those tend to be kind of generic.
And they also don't fulfill that one about quality materials typically.
Yeah, that's compatible, right.
So I think, I think there is, I think there's a lot, as long as there are options here and you don't have to do all of them, and there is this option even within number one of which one you might go with. I, I think that now, I think in, in hearing this a little more, I think that, I think, I think it is, we.
And I think we also need to think about going forward, you know, some, some years down the line when there's new staff here. A new person who isn't part of this conversation is going to understand what that means. So that if there's something that could provide more clarity to someone who's, you know, coming in from another city, we want to make sure that, because.
Lutis is going to be with us forever.
You know, Pasadena.
Forty years down the line.
In Pasadena, they have, when they have interpretations, they do a memo and then it's scanned in and it's, and you can click on it from the zoning code. So if there's a zoning code, there's a, there's a footnote, you can click on it and it brings up the thing. So it's online, everyone can see it. And I, I think it would be fabulous if we could have something like that. Because we have had sort of informal interpretations that often die with a change in the commission or the staff or whatever. And that, you know.
But Lutis, if you're saying like specifically if that, like, generic or cookie cutter, that terminology is too esoteric or something. I mean, I think what we're trying to get at is.
Depending on who you ask, it can be. But I, I do think, I mean, the way I interpret generic really is a faux style. It's, it's a generic interpretation of, of a particular style. I would interpret it that way. But again, that's my interpretation. That's what I'm saying. It is, it is open to that interpretation. But staff will be asked, "What do you mean by cookie cutter?" "What do you mean by generic?" And perhaps this is an interpretation by the commission that, that could be added here. I don't know if, you know, you've added some examples and further, further explanations here. Is there anything that can be?
Will, will the process be that if you bring it up, they are still coming to us to defend it? And, and your position can be, well, you're going, you may want to consider how you're going to explain why this is not a cookie cutter style.
Yeah.
Yes, but ultimately, staff is making those findings that, you know, we're bringing the findings.
Yeah, and you bring to us what, what the recommendation is.
Findings. I mean, the applicant is required to provide that, but staff is making those findings.
You're formulating that.
We do have to understand how this applies.
Okay. I, I still think the, the best way to explain this is that this-not-this pictures. A long list of this-not-this, you know, we have those in the hillside. They were in the, the Stonegate Design Guidelines to a certain extent. And, and that's something we don't have now, and, you know, we need to develop. Because a lot of these things you can write about a lot.
You need the graphic.
You, you need, you need the pictures. And I think that, you know, that, to me, the heart of finding one is, is responsive to the specific site. And these are other ways of explaining that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think the second part is partly it's an example of stating what we don't want so you can understand what we do. But part of it also is to state what we mean by, what's another example of, it's not responsive to a specific site. Cookie cutter generic is this design can go anywhere irrespective of the specific conceptual parcel that it's on. Like, and there may be instances that, that's a tough one to, if you've got a perfectly flat rectangular site, you know, I mean, you know, the sighting of it is kind of not irrelevant, but takes us a backseat to some of the other issues. But I think what we're trying to get at is if you took that design or that plan and you were, and the litmus test is you can put it on here, you can put it over there, you can put it over here, you can put it over here, flip it and it fits, you know, like it's, it's, it's not taking into account the nuances or the factors of where it, where it's going to be. And I, you know, sort of saying that, you know, having an audio file, you can click and hear that. But I think, I think that's what we're trying to capture in a nutshell of generic cookie cutter. But if it's, if that causes problems, I mean, I think we can just take that out and stop it at responsive to the specific site. Because that's essentially what we're, that's what we're saying. And if that's understood, then we don't need the rest of it. I don't want to, I don't want to make it confusing, so, I mean, that's essentially what we're trying to get at with that first part is.
I mean, in a way, if, if you're meeting the, the responsive to the specific site, then it, it's, it, it's kind of understood that it do not beat a standard or generic or cookie cutter.
Right, that's what rather than means. I mean, that's, the, the whole point is to provide.
Respect, yeah.
Is to, is in an attempt to actually clarify. If it's not clarifying, it's not useful. But we've had in the past lots of problems with people saying, "Well, what does responsive to the specific site mean?" And this is somewhat of an example to.
It's a this-not-that.
Yeah.
Yes.
In words.
It's a this-not-that, or it's, that's exactly what it is. And I think, you know, we've, we've all seen the things where it's, you know, the such-and-such residents and they, you know, erased the, the house from Montebello or Arcadia or wherever, and it, and it's now here, and that's exactly what we don't want. So.
I'm fine with it. I mean, obviously, but I.
I think that's fine. I think that the clarification is, has been helpful, so.
But Ken, if you have other words that you like better, that you think improve it, I'm, none of these are, are.
Sacred.
Sacred, yeah. Maybe responsive to the specific site is sacred. That's, to me, that's really the core of it. But the rest of it, innovative is sort of just nice, but noteworthy can, can go away. I, you know.
Well, I like those. I, I, I like that combination of words because it gives you direction and choice in a way. You know, because you don't, it doesn't have to be innovative every time. I think thoughtful is probably the most important to me, that it's really, someone thought about that building in that place, right? And on top of that, it would be nice if it were something really fabulous, you know, noteworthy, innovative. But just to get people to actually think this building is going in this, those houses around it, and it's important.
Where are we? What do we have left to cover?
That's about it, I think.
That's it on the findings.
Yeah, that's as far as we got.
Okay. So what, procedurally, where does this go?
Well, if you have some consensus on the work of the subcommittee, then direction would be given to staff to bring it back in a, a format that you can recommend to the council.
So I would say do that, and if you wish to make suggestions that make it more objective at the counter and easier to execute, I wouldn't mind seeing two versions of it when you bring it back. If you have an, can edit or two and talk it over with your colleagues. I don't need, no, it needs to come backward. I mean, bring it back, obviously, in the fashion that we did with the red line that says, "We would like to change if to but," et cetera.
So it would come back as an ordinance format for you to actually vote on?
And if you make, if you want to suggest any changes, we can then take it with or without the changes so we can get it done. Yeah.
Sidebar it, you know.
Yeah, I think that's great. And we're going to do all the different R1 amendments except for the lot, lot-sized things.
We can include everything that you've already discussed and decided upon and bring everything together.
So, well, does that mean this is being continued and doesn't need to be noticed again, or?
It will be noticed. It has not been noticed so far because it's only been a discussion. This time around, it is an ordinance that's coming before you, so it will be noticed in the newspaper.
All right, so we don't have a date?
Uh, no.
Yeah, okay.
And then with regard to the staff and council review of the hillside interaction, that, that's something that you guys will just revise or take out or whatever?
We're going to, we're going to review that at the attorney level and provide advice to staff and potentially, depending on what the conclusion is, maybe even have a closed session with the planning commission.
And then when we do bring it back for a public hearing and the different resolution, can we set it up so that we can vote on the, vote separately on each of the different things? Because I think most of them, we have consistence, but not all of them.
Okay, we're halfway done. Now we're done. All right, there is no audience, so I will suspend audience oral communication since we are alone. And anybody on the planning commission have anything they wish to share? I had mentioned to you last time that those signs are still up at One Carter, and they are still up at One Carter. Also, the story polls are at the top of One Quarter, and there's something called El Nino coming, and it's probably going to knock them into the street and down the hill, so they may want to knock those down before the storm does it for them.
We'll notify you.
Yeah, it's just, it's getting to be kind of a mess up there from the windstorm. And when the storm comes, it's, you're just going to have wood all over the place. They're not very well suspended. So we should probably clean that up for the, for the storm. It should be noted that it should be cleaned up, yes. I don't want wood flying. It would be the Wizard of Oz. Anything from the Planning and Community Preservation Staff?
We have one item for our next.
Which is the continuation of the last one.
Plus, we also have a new item, which is, this is going to be for the December 3 meeting. It's another municipal text amendment establishing control measures regulating the cultivation and distribution of cannabis.
I'm sorry. Where is this coming from?
This is a state mandate requirement. So basically, cities have to make determination. Either they're going to regulate cultivation of marijuana and the distribution of that, or prohibit it. Our code already prohibits the distribution, but now we need to add language for cultivation.
Cultivation would be the growing of it for medical purposes?
And it also, we also wanted to address in, in terms of dispensaries and the, really, it's looking at even now mobile dispensaries.
Mobile dispensaries.
Kind of like the food truck of marijuana.
Excellent. All of which still would only fall under medical. All of which still would only fall under medical uses, right? Because that's all that's legal in California. And do we currently have legal dispensary in, we do not.
Even though there is a building that looks like it's one with the big green cross out front.
We do not have legal dispense and so the question is, do we want to adopt an ordinance that allows or does not allow cultivation of medical marijuana?
And also mobile distribution.
And mobile distribution even though we don't have any physical distribution. Understood, well, that should be a fun discussion. I hope many of you come and visit with us and share your point of view on that.
I don't think that'll be your 13 minutes and 15 seconds.
You know, we're going to open, we're going to open with a chichincha.
I have one question on, there's, I saw in the city manager report, the fee calculations are coming to the city council in January, I think. Are they going to cycle through us? Because.
Most likely. I think that data is going to get pushed back, especially if we want to bring it to the commission first.
Okay, because, you know, I know I harp on this, but having one fee for any size unit just strikes me as crazy and the, and I think if we could chime in and try to convince people of that, it would be helpful.
We are at a bedroom count.
And quite honestly, I think the, our fee should reflect the cost of entering the data about the projects. So you can computerize, you can go find it again. Because our current system of having everything in, you know.
Punch cards.
Punch cards is not helpful.
They're really nice mail folders, though.
Yeah, the folders look really nice, but you know.
So come on down, December 3rd, we're going to talk about pot.
Yes.
Good plug.
Return.